Did he say okay?
Yes, he did.
This is the meeting for the City of Emeryville. Special study session. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Asher?
Here.
Councilmember Donahue?
Here.
Councilmember Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Here, and Mayor Atkins is excused. This is a study session. Oh, any public comment? No public comment. We'll go right into the study session on the proposed regulations, incentives, and guidelines for multi-unit residential development and affordable housing impact fee. Charlie?
Good evening, Vice Mayor Davis and members of the City Council. As you said, we're here for a study session on proposed new rules for residential development. I would like to point out that you have in front of you a little packet of paper that has been, has come out following the distribution of your packets. The first is simply a printout of the PowerPoint, so you can follow along with that if you wish. And for the public, there are copies of the PowerPoint that are where the agendas are. There's also a few extras here on the desk on either side. In addition, also included is the comments from Mayor Atkins that were previously distributed to you, a letter from the attorneys for Anton, the Nady site, a letter that we just received about an hour and a half ago, which I believe was emailed to all of you from the Building Industry Association, then the revised charts for the two hypothetical projects that are in your staff report, and then the two emails from me that I sent you yesterday and today. The first one being with the charts of the low-income units, showing how that's the lowest category that we have, and the second one was the information on Berkeley's affordable housing that I distributed to you this afternoon. We have a limited number of hard copies of all of these things for any member of the public who would like, who would like one. So, this is an overview of my presentation. I'm gonna begin with background and then next steps, where we go from here, then a discussion of the proposals that staff has developed based on the input that we've previously received from the council and the planning commission, then a discussion about the state density bonus system and how that ties into all of this, then some examples of a couple of hypothetical projects, so you can see how these proposed regulations would work in the real world, then a discussion of the effect of these regulations or these changes on our ability to meet our regional housing needs allocation. That's R H N A, that's what R H N A stands for, a discussion about the affordable housing impact fee and the INLU option, and if you wish to modify either, both of those, and then finally wrapping up with the seven discussion questions that we would like your direction on tonight. So, to begin, last year on July 14th, the council adopted the affordable housing impact fee, which was $20,000 per unit, with the INLU option of 6.9% low-income units. At the time, the council was provided with this information on how our fees compare to those of other East Bay cities. The red at the bottom are the permitting fees, and the other colors are various impact fees, the blue being the affordable housing impact fee. The bar on the far left is what Emeryville looked like before we adopted the fees, the new impact fees last year. As you can see, we were the second lowest of these cities that we looked at. And then this bar, the next bar over, is how it looks today after the adoption of those fees. And we didn't just adopt an affordable housing fee, we also adopted a new parks and recreation impact fee, which is shown here in green, and an updated transportation fee, which is shown here in orange. Then on January 20th this year, the council held a study session on the Sherwin-Williams project, and the, one of the conclusions from that study session was that our bonus point system needs to be overhauled, and so that has fed into this study as well. On May 2nd, you held a joint meeting with the planning commission, a joint study session on these proposed residential regulations, incentives, and guidelines. On May 19th, you adopted the new family-friendly design guidelines. On May 28th, the planning commission held their study session on these proposed residential regulations, incentives, and guidelines. And then about a month and a half ago, on July 21st, you considered but did not approve a proposed development agreement for the Marketplace project. The affordable housing impact fee and the INLU provision of 6.9% low-income units was called into question as part of those deliberations. So that brings us to tonight. We're having this study session, and we hope to get your final direction on the amendments to the general plan and planning regulations that are being proposed. Going forward, assuming we get your direction tonight, then later this month, the planning commission would hold a public hearing and make a recommendation on the proposed amendments to the general plan and planning regulations. That would come back to the council on October 20th for the public hearing, passage of the resolution to amend the general plan, and the first reading of the ordinance to amend the planning regulations. On November 3rd, the ordinance to amend the planning regulations would come back to the council for final passage. November 19th, the general plan amendment would go into effect 30 days after its passage on October 20th, and December 3rd, the planning regulation amendment would go into effect 30 days after its final passage on November 3rd. So that's the game plan. Now I'd like to go over the proposals that staff has come up with based on your previous input. This is a kind of a summary slide that previews the whole thing, and I think it's important to make the distinction between regulations and the development bonuses. The regulations that are the requirements, I should say, that are proposed would apply to all multifamily projects of 10 units or more, whether they needed development bonuses or not. And those pertain to unit mix, family-friendly design, GreenTrip certification, and possible exceptions. The bonuses only apply to projects that are above the base level and would need a development bonus, and as part of that, we propose reducing the base levels for floor area ratio height and density in order to capture more projects in the bonus system. And then the, the bonus system would then have provisions for affordable housing, other community benefits, and ownership housing. So, to the requirements that would apply to all residential projects of 10 units or more, we propose that the basic requirement be that 50% of the units must be two bedrooms or more, which would include 10% of the units being three bedrooms or more for residential projects with 10 or more units. Now, I added another bullet point here. This is not a requirement, but I put this in because it's related to the unit mix, the notion that the numbers could actually be higher than 50% and 10%, and we have put that in as an option for projects that do require development bonuses. That is something that they could choose to use to get additional bonus points. I'll, I'll come back to that when I talk about the development bonuses, but I put it here because it relates to the concept of unit mix. All residential projects would be required to comply with the Emeryville Design Guidelines for Residential Building and Use Types, and in addition, all of the required two or more bedroom units would be required to comply with the guidelines for family-friendly residential units. Exceptions could be considered on a case-by-case basis as part of a negotiation with a developer, part of the approval process. We're suggesting it be by a conditional use permit, although it could be by some other mechanism. I think the key, though, is the finding that would need to be made, which we are suggesting that the finding would be that what's being proposed is a housing type or types that deviate from this unit mix and/or design requirements, and that the importance of meeting this need outweighs the importance of complying with the requirements. And either the planning commission or city council, whoever is deciding on the project, would have to make that finding. And if they were not convinced of this, then they wouldn't approve the exception. An example might be a proposal for multi-generational housing, where a two-bedroom unit might have two master suites instead of just one master suite. That would be a deviation from the requirements. For GreenTrip certification, this is something that comes from Transform, so we are proposing that that or an other equivalent certification be required prior to issuance of Certificate of Occupancy for all multi-unit residential projects with 10 units or more. So, that's the requirements, pretty straightforward. Now, moving on into the development bonuses. In terms of height, FAR, and residential density, we're proposing that the base levels be dropped, the bonus levels remain the same, and this will require a general plan amendment because those three things are all specified in the general plan. The base levels would become 50% of the bonus levels, approximately. If the number doesn't work out to an even number, we round it up to the next even number. In the 100 to 100-plus height district, we would propose that the base be dropped to 75 feet, so you have an area between 75 and 100 feet that would require bonus points proportional to the height increase. And we're also proposing that the 0.5 no-bonus FAR in the eastern residential neighborhoods be replaced by 0.5 to 1.0 FAR. The reason for that is as a companion to the density bonus that is already available in that area, so that if you get the density bonus, you could also get the FAR bonus, because if you don't, the units end up being really tiny, about 625 square feet. So, this is a bar chart that illustrates the proposed drop in the base level for FAR. Just as an example, over here on the far right, we have the highest FAR district, which currently is 4.0 to 6.0, so the base currently is right here at 4.0, and the bonus, highest bonus level is up here at 6.0. We would drop the base to 3.0, which is half of 6.0, obviously, and that means that the area between 3 and 4, which is crosshatched here, previously part of the base would now become bonus. So similarly, in all these others, the crosshatched area is currently is part of the base and would become the bonus. This here illustrates the new 1.0 FAR bonus we're proposing to add in the eastern residential neighborhoods. This is the height districts. This one doesn't change because it's already pretty close to half. These would drop accordingly, and this is the 100 to 100 plus, which right now it's just 100. If you go over 100 feet, you need 100 bonus points. There's nothing between 0 and 100. We would now have a base of 75 feet, where you would incrementally get bonus points up to 100 feet. And finally, residential density, which is really kind of what this is all about. We have five residential density districts. This one here is already at approximately half. The others would be dropped to half from where they are now. This map illustrates the residential densities. There, of course, are similar maps that go with the FAR and the height limits, but we're really, we're talking about residential development, and this is what most directly relates to residential development. These five colored areas correspond to the five bars on the previous chart. We've amended the legend to show the new numbers over here. I would note that some of this map is blank. In those areas that are blank, residential development is not permitted. So we're really only talking about the areas that are colored on this map. We're proposing a two-tier system for the bonuses, for any project that needs a bonus, however many points it may need, up to 100 points. At least 50% of those points would have to come from affordable housing, and no more than 50% would come from other community benefits. In terms of affordable housing, the way you get your points for affordable housing is the residential projects must provide in-project affordable units proportional to the number of bonus points that are needed. For rental projects, it would be a combination of very low, low, and moderate income units proportional to the city's R H N A, that's Regional Housing Needs Allocation Numbers, and for ownership projects, they would all be moderate income units. For non-residential projects, we're proposing that they pay an increased affordable housing impact fee proportional to the number of bonus points that they would need. This chart is a lot of numbers, but I want to spend a minute or two going over it because this is kind of the heart of our whole proposal. These are the affordable units that would be required in projects that need bonus points. So we have rental here and ownership over here. For rental, as you can see, it's divided between very low, low, and moderate income units, and for ownership, it's just moderate. The percent of points increases as the, I mean, the percent of units increases as the number of points increases. The number of points goes up to 50, because the maximum that a project would ever need would be 100 points, and we're suggesting that half of those come from affordable housing, and the other half come from other community benefits. Therefore, this chart goes up to the maximum of 50 points for affordable housing. This number here, the fee equivalent, we took the methodology that was used in the residential Nexus study, which had identified what they called affordability gaps at each of these three income levels, and you multiply the gap by the percent of units and add them together, and that gives you an approximation of the equivalent of the affordable housing fee. So as you know, our current fee is $20,000 per unit, so we started a little bit above that and increased it up to almost $30,000. So the, this fee, in theory, is equivalent to this percent of units broken down in this way. So the idea here is to illustrate that these numbers are reasonable and that they are proportional to our current affordable housing impact fee. Similarly, for ownership housing, and actually for ownership housing, affordable units are already required because inclusionary housing still applies to ownership housing, so the base for that is 20% moderate. We're suggesting if they want to have a bonus, then for every five points, they add a half a percentage, up to a total of 25% moderate income units, which is equivalent to almost $29,000 fee. So that's how the affordable housing chart works for bonus points. Now, I just want to quickly illustrate, in the hypothetical projects I'm gonna show you in a minute, the first one requires, I think it's 37 points, so cut that in half and round it, and that would be 20 points for affordable housing, and then 17 points for the other community benefits. That would look like this. That project would have to provide 13% total, assuming it's rental, total units, 2.9% very low, 4.5% low, and 5.5% moderate. The other hypothetical project I'll show you needs a total of 100 points, which means they will need 50 bonus points for affordable housing, and that would be 16% affordable units, and that would be broken down like this. For the non-residential projects, we're suggesting that they simply increase the fee by 10% for every five bonus points they need, up to 100% increase. In other words, if they need 100 points, half coming from housing, they would have to pay double the fee. The fee currently is, well, it's a little more because it was increased this past year, but for round numbers, say it's $4 a square foot, and let's say a project needed 60 bonus points, so half of that is 30, which they would get from the housing, and the other 30 from other community benefits. That would be a 60% increase in the fee, so 60% increase of $4 would be $6.40. So that project would have to pay $6.40 a square foot instead of $4 a square foot. In terms of the community benefits, the, how you get the other half of your bonus points, I want to emphasize this, I say this over and over again, it's a point that really needs to be underscored. For bonus points, community benefits must be significant and clearly beyond what would otherwise be required for the project under applicable code provisions, conditions of approval, and/or environmental review mitigation measures. That's, that's what the code already says, and that's what it would continue to say. You know, I often hear, "Well, those things should be required anyway." That's fine. You have the discretion, well, you don't have the discretion to require anything you want, but I mean, you can set the requirements within reason, wherever you think is reasonable. If you set the bar here, then anything below that bar doesn't get bonus points, but if it's above that bar, that could potentially be eligible for bonus points. If you decide you want to set the bar up here, then the bonus points start at that bar, right? And as an example, we typically, we can require a project to underground the utilities on the frontage in front of their property. Normally, though, we can't require them to underground their utilities that are beyond the frontage of their property. If a developer volunteered to underground utilities for two or three blocks in each direction from their property, that could potentially be eligible for bonus points, because that is not something we would otherwise require. We're also proposing to add a new finding, that the proposed community benefits for the project are acceptable and appropriate in this case, and will provide tangible benefits to the community. There's no such finding right now. The only finding is that they've earned enough bonus points. We think this is important to make it explicit, that it's the planning commission or city council, as the case may be, that decides what community benefits are okay for the particular project that's in front of them, and that those benefits will, in fact, provide tangible benefits to the community. This is our current list of public benefits that's worth, that are worth bonus points. There are 18 items on this list, plus the flexible public benefit, so a total of 19. We are proposing to eliminate all but seven. And the seven that would remain would be public open space, alternative energy but only zero net energy, that's carbon-neutral project, public improvements, utility undergrounding, additional family-friendly units, small businesses, and then we would retain the flexible community benefit. For public open space, it's either providing a percentage of the site for public open space or putting money into the city's open space fund. For alternative, for zero net energy, that's a 50-point category. You either get all or nothing there, so if you don't need 50 bonus points, it's probably not worth it here, but if you do, you could go for those 50 points. Public improvements is also really just a calculation of money, how much are the public improvements worth that the project is proposing. For utility undergrounding, the same thing, and then for small businesses, that is also a contribution to the city, to the city fund for small businesses. So, public open space, public improvements, utility undergrounding, and small businesses are all based on a formula of 10 bonus points for every 1% of construction valuation. The additional family-friendly units is sort of a variation on what we currently have, and the way this would work, if you recall back to when I was talking about the basic requirements, and I said under unit mix that there would be a provision also under the bonus system to increase the unit mix, so that's this. What this suggests is, in terms of the other community benefits, besides the affordable housing, that you could get up to 50 bonus points by providing additional two-bedroom and three-bedroom units, all of which would be required to be designed to be family-friendly. So, in the two projects that, two hypothetical projects that I am going to show you in a minute, the, the one that required 37 bonus points, they could get 20 bonus points for affordable housing. The other 17, they could get 15 from here and two from somewhere else. If they chose to do this, they would have to provide an additional 15% two-or-more bedroom, which would include an additional 3% three-or-more bedroom. So the total unit mix would end up being 65% two-bedroom, two-or-more bedroom, and 13% three-or-more bedroom. The other project that requires 100 points, if they chose to get their additional 50 bonus points from this category, they would provide 50% additional two-or-more bedroom and 10% three-or-more bedroom, for a total of 100% two-or-more bedroom units in the project, in other words, all of them, and 20% three-or-more bedroom. Again, this is one option for getting the additional community benefit bonus points. Moving into ownership housing, any residential project that seeks bonus points would be required to record a condominium map. The developer could opt to retain ownership of the units and operate it as a rental project, in which case the rental affordability requirements would apply, but when the units are sold, then the ownership affordability requirements would apply, and when the units are sold, conditions, covenants, and restrictions would need to be recorded that stipulate that at least 50% of the units must be owner-occupied at any given time, and no more than 10% of the units may be owned by a single owner. Also, when the units are sold, the condominium conversion requirements would apply, which includes things like tenant notification and assistance. So, that's our proposals. Now I want to briefly talk about the state density bonus system. We are required by state law to offer this as an option. It is already in our code. However, we would modify the code to specify that the developers have a choice between the Emeryville bonus system or the state density bonus system, but they cannot use both. The state density bonus system provides for up to a 35% density bonus for providing in-project affordable units, and this is sort of a simplification of the formulas they have. In order to get the maximum 35% density bonus, a developer has to provide either 11% very-low income units, 20% low-income units, or 40% moderate income units. That, however, is only available for condominium projects, not for rental projects. And based on the methodology that I previously described, we've calculated the impact fee equivalent of these. The very-low income comes out to about $23,000. As you can see, the low income is very expensive. It comes out to about $51,000, and the moderate is about $46,000. So, the state density bonus system, however, requires no further community benefits or a condominium map. However, any project under this system would still be subject to the basic requirements, which would include unit mix and design, a family-friendly design, and GreenTrip certification. The state density bonus system also requires the city to provide additional concessions to developers. It doesn't cover FAR and height like the Emeryville bonus system does, but those could be requested by the developer as concessions, and basically, the city has to grant whatever concession the developer asks for unless we make findings that, you know, we can't do it for some reason. So they would just ask for whatever increase in height or FAR they needed to meet their 35% density bonus. So for projects that don't need any more than a 35% bonus, the state density bonus system using very-low income units would probably be the most attractive option to developers. This chart is the same chart I showed you previously of the residential densities and the proposed drop from, in the base level, but this time I've superimposed on it, the density increases under both the state density bonus law and our proposed system. So here's, this red line here is 35%. So any project that's in the shaded area that's up to the red line could use the state density bonus system. The green line here, of course, is, generally it's 100%. Here it's 93, because this is a little more than half. But you can get up to that green line with the Emeryville bonus system. So if a project was between the red line and the green line, they could only use the Emeryville bonus system unless they reduce the size of the project, get it, get it back down below the red line. Now, this is a bit tedious, but I want to just go through a couple of hypothetical projects so that you'll understand how these regulations would apply in the real world to, you know, real hypothetical projects. This first one, which I'm calling A1, is slightly different than the project A that was in your staff report, and the only difference is that the site area has been increased from 2 acres to 2.12 acres, and the reason for that is to make the state density bonus system a viable option for this project without having to reduce the number of units, which is a very real possibility. So under the current regulations, this 200-unit project, as currently proposed, would have 40% two-bedroom units and 20, and 10% three-bedroom units. Under our proposed regulations, that would be the ratio that would be required, so their unit mix is okay, and that would still apply under the state density bonus system. The project currently is below the base level for height, density, and FAR, so it'd need no bonus points. Under the proposed change, it would now need 37 bonus points, 20 for affordable housing, 17 for other community benefits. The state density bonus system does not use bonus points, so that's not applicable. For affordable units currently in the project, currently, they don't have to provide any. Under our system, if you'll hearken back to the chart that I showed you, where they needed 20 bonus points for affordable units, this is how that would break down, 26 total, six very-low, nine low, 11 moderate. Under the state density bonus system, assuming they opt to use the very-low income units, which are the most affordable for the developer, that would result in 16 very-low income units. Family-friendly unit design is not currently required. It would be required under our proposed regulations, and it would still be required if they decided to use the state density bonus system. A condo map is not currently required. It would be required for bonus points under our proposed regulations, but it would not be required under the state density bonus law. Now, if you recall, for the other community benefits, I mentioned that several of those categories are equal to 10 points for each 1% of construction valuation, so if you assume that that's the option the developer is gonna choose to use, the evaluation of this project is about $50 million, and they need 17 additional points, so if you multiply that times the valuation, you get $850,000 worth of other community benefits. The other community benefits don't apply to the state density bonus system. So this line here shows you the total value of the affordable units. In this case, it's just the $4 million fee under our current regulations. The value of these units here is about 4.8 million. The value of these 16 very-low income units is about 4.6 million. So the bottom line is down here. Under our proposed regulations, they would also have the added expense of the additional community benefits, so it would add up to about 5.7 million, 4 million under the current regulations, about 4.7 million under the state density bonus system. So as you can see, the most affordable, pardon the pun, for the for the developer in this case would be to use the state density bonus system. Project B is a bigger project. It's a 500-unit project on a five-acre site. The current proposal would have 5% three-or-more bedroom and 35% two-bedroom. Our regulations would require that that be increased, our proposed regulations, so they'd have to add 25 three-bedroom units to get it up to 10%, and they'd have to add 25 two-bedroom units to get that up to 40%. Now, under the state density bonus system, because they can only get a 35% density bonus here, they would be limited to about 338 units on this site. So that means they would be dropping the project size by 162 units. And based on that, this would be, they'd still have to provide 50% two-or-more bedroom units, but it would be fewer units. So that's what this shows over here. Under the current regulations, they are at the top of, I think they're at the top of the height limit and the top of the residential density limit. They're not quite at the top of floor-area ratio, but they need 100 bonus points in at least one category. So that means they need 100 points currently. Under the proposed regulations, they'd still need 100 bonus points, but that would be broken down 50/50, 50 for affordable housing and 50 for other community benefits. And again, the state density bonus system does not use bonus points. Currently, they are not required to provide any in-project affordable units. Under our proposed regulations, again, going back to the chart where I showed what it would take to earn 50 points, this is what that would look like. They'd have to have 16% total affordable units. That equals 80 units, and that would break down as 18 very-low, 28 low, 34 moderate. Under the state density bonus system, they would have to provide 28 very-low income units if they chose to go that route, but again, this would be a smaller project. Family-friendly design is not currently required. It would be required under our proposed regulations. And again, it would be required even if they chose to use the state density bonus system. Condo map not currently required would be required for the project needing bonus points under our proposed regulations, but not required under the state density bonus system. Now, looking at the other community benefits, and again, saying that they're going to go the route of 1% evaluation for every 10 points, they need 50 points, well, actually, currently they need 100 points here. So, under the current regulations. And it's about a $125 million project, so that works out to 12.5 million for other community benefits. Under the proposed regulations, it would only be 50 points for other community benefits, so that would be half this number, 6.25 million. And again, under state density bonus system, there's no other community benefits. Under the current regulations, they'd have to pay a $10 million affordable housing fee, which is $20,000 times 500 units. Under the proposed regulations, the value of these units here, we estimate at about $14.8 million. And the value of these 28 low, very-low income units is about $7.9 million. So if you add it all up, under the current regulations, they're at about $22.5 million, which is 12.5 for community benefits and 10 million for the affordable housing fee. Under the proposed regulations, they're actually slightly lower. They're at about $21.1 million, which is higher value for the, for the housing units, but lower cost for the other community benefits. And then the state density bonus system, they're at 7.9 million, which is considerably less than either of these other two, but it's a significantly smaller project. It's only, it's smaller by 162 units. In terms of our regulations versus the current regulations by our calculations, it's pretty much of a wash for the developer in terms of how much it would cost. So, those are the hypothetical projects. Now briefly, I want to just talk about our regional housing needs allocation. As I'm sure you know, you've heard this many times, our 2014 to 2022 RENA number is 1,498. Our housing element includes an analysis of how we can meet that number. The basic rule is you have to have sufficient sites in your city zoned to be able to accommodate your RENA. So what the housing element in its analysis has is, first of all, projects that are currently in the development pipeline, and that's line B here, which, when the housing element was adopted, was 1,837 units, already more than our RENA. They then looked at vacant and underutilized sites zoned for residential use, and they looked at 75% of the base level, assuming that the projects would get no bonuses. So if you take 75% of the base level of all of the various vacant and underutilized residential sites, you get an additional almost 3,500 units, which totals 5,300 altogether, which is more than 3,800 units surplus above our RENA. So that's our current housing element's conclusion. What we have done for this purpose, for these, for this analysis, is first, we have modified the approved, the planned and approved projects because they've been, they've changed a little bit since the housing element was adopted. The total now is about 1,906 units. And taking into account the proposed drop in base levels of residential density and applying that drop to all of the same sites that are looked at in the housing element, the same vacant and underutilized sites, and again, using 75% of the base level, we still get 2,253 units for a total of over 4,000 units. So adding the pipeline projects and the vacant and underutilized sites together, even with our proposed drop in residential density, we have a surplus of over 2,600 units. Yes?
Charlie, I just, I wanted to pull out a quote from the staff report that backs this up, just because I, I like to hear the percentage as well, so that, and you did that work, so thank you. The percentage surplus for the as-revised number with the 2,661 units then would be 275% more than our RENA number.
Right. We have plenty of capacity to meet our RENA, even with the proposed drop in residential density.
Right, thank you.
Finally, last topic before we get to the discussion questions. The impact fee and the INLU option. As I mentioned, the, our affordable housing impact fee and our INLU numbers have been questioned, and there's some thought that maybe they should be changed. This is the same chart that I showed you previously, except that I've taken off the bar that had Emeryville before our impact fees. I've also updated all of these other bars with whatever information I could get from these other cities, so they're, some of them are a little bit taller than they were previously. Also, I don't know if you can see it, but here in the Berkeley bar, their fee is $28,000 per unit, but for a couple of years, they were offering an $8,000 discount to 20,000. So that's this area right here. That expired this past July 1st. Any project that got into the pipeline before this past July 1st is subject to the $20,000 fee, but if they're after that, they're subject to the full $28,000 fee. So these are our impact fees over here. These are our base permit fees. The yellow area here are miscellaneous impact fees, such as the school fee and the sewer connection fee and the general plan maintenance fee and things like that. The green represents our parks and recreation fee, the orange is our transportation fee, and the blue is our housing fee. I didn't mention previously, but this is for a prototypical 100-unit rental apartment project. So our fee currently is $20,000. You could choose to increase it to $23,000, which would put us almost at the same level as Berkeley. $23,000 is, sounds like an odd number. It's roughly equivalent to what our previous inclusionary requirement was before the Palmer decision took it away. That was 9% moderate and 6% very-low income units for rental projects. That would have equaled about a $23,000 fee. So this is where we were previously. $28,000, of course, is what Berkeley has, but they don't have all the other impact fees that we have, even though their permit fees are more than double ours, they don't have the other impact fees. So we would be higher than Berkeley if we went to 28,000. And then 30,000 is just 50% increase over our current 20,000, and that, that would be what that looks like. In terms of the INLU option, our current number is 6.9% low-income for $20,000. Now, city attorney has determined that there's not a lot of flexibility in modifying that number if you're going to stay with low income and $20,000, because it's based on an analysis that was done by the same consultant that done our neck, did our Nexus study, and that's included in your packet, I think it's attachment K or L or somewhere in there. Anyway, all of, all of those numbers are in there that show how, excuse me, how they reach the 6.9% number. However, you can modify the INLU number in a couple of ways. One is you can choose a different income level for the INLU units. As you can see, if you did that and kept it at 20,000, we'd go to 8.3 if you went to very-low, or 15.3 if you went to moderate. And/or you could increase the fee itself, which would increase all of these numbers proportionally. I think it's interesting to note that Berkeley's fee is 28,000, and their level is very-low income, and that is equivalent, in terms of our number, to 11.6%, whereas theirs is 10%. So we're actually higher than Berkeley, if we, you know, comparatively speaking. So basically, this is a menu to choose from. It doesn't have to be these numbers. It just needs to be something that's proportional to these numbers. Another option you might consider is combining income levels, so you have a certain percent of, say, low and another percent of very-low. We just have to crunch the numbers and make sure that they add up to the, you know, whatever you decide to set the fee at. So, we are now at the discussion questions. I want to just briefly go over what they are before I'll then take your clarifying questions and open it up for public comment. First, does the council agree with our proposed regulations for unit mix, design guidelines, exceptions, and the Green Trip certification? Second, do you agree with the proposed reduction in base levels for floor-area ratio, height, and residential density? Third, do you agree with the proposed two-tier system for bonus points, whereas, whereby at least 50% of the points would have to be earned through affordable housing, the other half through other community benefits? Do you agree with the proposed affordable housing provisions for projects that seek bonus points? In other words, that chart that shows all the percentages of how many, what percent of units would have to be provided for the various bonus points? Do you agree with the proposed modifications to the list of community benefits? Do you agree with the proposal to require a condo map for residential projects seeking bonuses? And finally, do you wish to increase the affordable housing impact fees and accordingly modify the percent and/or income level of the INLU units? And I will leave these questions up here for your reference during your discussion. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to respond to any questions you may have.
Any clarifying questions for Charlie?
Not right now, no.
I'd like to hear from the public. Is that agreeable to the council?
Yes.
Has everybody filled out their little yellow slips for speaking tonight? If not, we have a supply of them there. And I'll start right out with a public comment. Greg McConnell. I'll read five and you can get lined up. Greg McConnell, Lisa Verder-Brogan, Andrew Baker, Kevin Ma, and Michael McConnell. Greg McConnell, how are you?
I'm doing pretty good. Greg McConnell, I'm with the Jobs and Housing Coalition, which is an Oakland and East Bay organization that tries to promote jobs for our residents and new people and housing. And Ms. Asher, I want to apologize for not having been able to reach out to you before tonight. I spoke with the other council members, but I had some personal challenges and a difficulty with my leg, so the time just ran out on me. So I don't want you to think that I was avoiding you or anything like that. What the Jobs and Housing Coalition has been following closely are proposed regulations throughout the region on housing. You know, we saw the Legislative Analyst Report. Is there a time limit, by the way?
Say again?
Is there a time limit?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Three minutes.
Oh, I better go quickly then. What we've been trying to monitor and follow was our developments, new developments on housing. We know that cities all over the East Bay and across the Bay are trying to grapple with the issue of affordable housing for working-class people and for others as well. So that's how we got interested in what you were doing. What we were most concerned about, or wanted to know more about, was whether or not the combined impact of these proposed regulations would stifle development. Our thought is that the last thing we want to do is reduce the supply of housing, because in fact, that's how we got to the housing crisis that we have today. I don't, I'm not the expert to answer that specifically on a project-by-project basis. The developers, and you'll hear from some of them, will, I'm sure, talk about that. But I do know that it's quite obvious that we have to do something, and it's quite obvious that we have to try to work together as we do that something, and that we have to balance our desires for, for more against whether or not projects can still be built. And that, that's primarily the interest that I have here. I'll let the individuals who are going to speak tonight talk about what they think this does in their situation. But the Jobs and Housing Coalition would like to continue working with the council, would like to continue working with the staff as you go through your step-by-step process to decide what you ultimately do. We just say that there's a great need for a balanced approach to all of these regulations and for the development of housing in Emeryville and in cities throughout the Bay Area. Thank you.
Thank you. Lisa, would you remind me repeating your name with the correct pronunciation?
Not at all, Nora. Lisa Vorder-Brogan. It's German.
I was close.
It means before the bridge. So, so here I am to bridge the, the distance between the building community and the city of Emeryville on this particular issue. The Building Industry Association of the Bay Area represents primarily the residential development community in, in the Bay Area. And our members, and we're very concerned that these proposed regulations will actually achieve the opposite of what Emeryville and what the Bay Area really need, which is more housing of all kinds. These new, proposed regulations would make it much more expensive to build housing in Emeryville, so much so that developers have told you and have told us that they will just walk away from the housing units that they had hoped to build here, or they will substantially scale down their projects. In either case, what we end up with is fewer units, which is the last thing that we really need in the Bay Area, given our tremendous housing costs and shortages. And Greg McConnell made a reference to the Legislative Analyst Report, and I included a copy of the executive summary. And the LAO concluded that the, that the state of California needs to double, more than double, the number of housing units it builds every year for years to start to mitigate the housing in affordability crisis we face in the state, primarily in the coastal communities, you know, which would be right here. Emeryville has a very enviable position geographically. You're located next to everything that anyone would need, and as a result, a lot of people really would love that anyone would need, and as a result, a lot of people really would love to be able to be in Emeryville. So we would really urge Emeryville to look at policies that would result in the production of more housing and not less housing. And we understand that there are numerous financial considerations on all sides, but we would urge you to look for a balance in that that actually gives us more of what we need and not less. Thank you.
Andrew Baker.
Hello, Andrew Baker from Anton Development. Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm here to express our deep concern about the proposed bonus incentive program. Our project's been in the works since early last year, and we've continued to work with the city to adapt to increase burdens imposed on the project, and now it finds itself on the brink of non-viability. The city imposed the affordable housing fee of $4.2 million on our project, which was a severe blow, but we've persevered on that. The city has also imposed specific and strict guidelines on unit mix and design. And again, we adapted and are willing to do the 40 percent two-bedroom and 10 percent three-bedroom, family-friendly. And we've recently opened a dialogue with Green Trip about investigating a more urban parking ratio to make our project better. We're fighting to keep our project alive, but these increases bring us to the point of non-viability, where it wouldn't go forward, we wouldn't have the units, and the school fees, park fees, public art fees wouldn't be available. We're willing to build affordable units on-site as part of our project, but at a ratio that makes sense and doesn't kill the project. The project simply cannot absorb the impact of downzoning and move forward. We've compromised and adapted in good faith with the city, and now we ask for a fraction of that compromise in return. We ask that our project be exempt from the downzoning, or at least we need a higher downzone base density. And additionally, we would urge you not to increase the affordable housing fee above the current 20,000 per unit. Ultimately, I think the unintended consequence of this action will be to guide developers towards the state density bonus, to guide them towards less housing and less density, and possibly kill projects. So I urge you to keep an open dialogue with us as we work through this. Thank you.
Kevin Ma. Kevin, before you start, let me call the next five people.
Okay.
Michael McConnell, Gary Grimm, Donna Briskin, Tim Curran, and let's see, hold on. Paul Germain. Kevin.
Thank you. Good evening, council members. I am Kevin Ma with Lennar, representing the Sherman Williams Project. In terms of the citywide rezoning and density bonus regulations being discussed tonight, we do understand why the city has decided to revise its policies around both affordable and family-friendly housing. But as there is a crisis and a shortage for all types of housing across the Bay Area, we would just ask that council pursue a balanced and mindful approach for the new guidelines and regulations. We would hope to see revised guidelines and regulations that are attractive to the city, area residents and businesses, and the development community. We would like to continue working with the city and staff to develop a set of regulations that will not only achieve many of the city's goals, but also allows us to develop our project. If the rules are too rigid, neither of us will be able to achieve any of our goals. Thank you for your consideration.
Michael McConnell. Will the names I call please kind of line up so we can pep this up a little? Do I have to repeat the names?
Michael McConnell, 1500 Park Avenue.
Gary Grimm, Michael McConnell, Gary Grimm, Donna.
I'll start, Michael.
Paul Germain, and Tim Curran. Step up, guys.
First of all, this is extremely, I honor the council and the Planning Commission for trying to wrestle with this really complicated issue. I personally believe that the way to attract families to a city is to have great schools, not the other way around. Certainly works other places, but that's not what we're talking about tonight. We are aware of what a mess San Francisco is turning into, the kind of elite lack of housing driving working people out of the city. And so I have a couple of, I'm mostly worried about the unintended consequences of the policies we're discussing. First of, I don't know, maybe it's clear to you, but I'm not clear how you decide who lives in these affordable units or in these two- and three-bedroom units. At first, I thought we were just going to have to lobby for Sherman Williams to include parking places for the Google bus and the Apple bus because we were building three-bedroom units, which would be populated by three engineers. But in the new guidelines, I wonder if we shouldn't have Humphrey Bogart stops for all the students who are going to live there, because grad students certainly qualify as low-income. So I don't know how you deal with that, but I would say, let's think about it and not assume it's going to be working people. The second thing is that I think it's a great, I personally think that the city doesn't need to stretch way above its RENA requirements. I think the city is in danger of having too many people, too many cars. It's in danger with all the plans in place of not being as livable it is today. Certainly, my neighborhood will be negatively impacted by almost any level of the bonuses. So let's make them hard to get. Let's make it really hard to get those bonuses. I'm especially concerned about the ability to write a check to a city fund for putting more people in my neighborhood. I'd like to see if the open space is being paid for, let's have that open space in my neighborhood, not some fund. If a small business check is being written for those bonus points, it should apply to the neighborhood which is being harmed by those extra units. The same thing for the, I could go down the list, but there's a series of the Small Business Fund, the Parks Fund, any of the places where you can write a check, even undergrounding. Shouldn't the undergrounding be in that neighborhood? Because that's where all the extra people are going to be. I don't want to see some other neighborhood getting all the benefits of having way too many people in our neighborhood. So that's my concern, is let's keep talking this through. Think through the unintended consequences, and by no means is every lot in this city filled to the maximum in the best interests of all of us.
Gary Grimm.
Thank you. I'm Gary Grimm, and I'm speaking on behalf of my wife, Ann Holsmary, and I. We're members of the 45th Street Artists Co-op. And I'm glad that you folks understand the complexity of the development bonuses better than I do, but I want to comment on a couple of things. I want to support Mike McConnell's comments that he just made, and I want to speak to discussion issue number five that's mentioned about the community benefit categories. It's our belief that the guiding principle for granting community benefit development bonuses should be direct benefit to the affected community by a particular development project, and not just payment to a citywide general fund or a citywide fund for those general purposes. I think it's, excuse me, I think it's positive that the categories have been significantly reduced from 19 to seven. That's a very good direction. But I think some of the categories are still too vague and still too easy to get, that you can get up to what you need just by filling those bonus points, without, again, without providing direct benefit to the community that's involved. Just a couple of points to note. At least three or four of the seven categories can be granted by contributions to a citywide general fund, not going to the specific community. And some of the categories, such as small business and flexible community benefits, are overly vague and probably too easy to get. Finally, I'm disappointed that the public art category has been dropped from the list. So I urge the council to crack down on the availability of bonus points for community benefit and reduce the maximum points in these categories, and have the remaining categories relate to direct benefit for the community that's affected by the development project. Thank you.
Donna Briskin.
Donna Briskin, 1500 Park. And I want to underscore what both Mike and Gary have just said. I'm really, and I know I said this at the May meeting, but really supportive that the city council has set an agenda that it wants to accomplish and is bringing the planning guidelines and bonus points into line with that agenda. What I'm not comfortable with, and again, I've said this before, and it touches on what Mike and Gary said, is that I think the levels allowable by the bonus points currently, which is not one of the questions that Charlie put forward, you know, talked about dropping the base level but didn't talk about dropping the bonus level. And when you look at hypothetical Project B, you're talking 100-foot height limits, just as an example of the bonus things, in a neighborhood where the other buildings are 40, 45 feet, other than the exception of the little wings on the top of our building. You're talking about it really overwhelming the neighborhood at that level, and the same thing goes for density and far. So either I would ask that you lower, when you're lowering the base level, that you also lower the bonus level, or that you severely reduce the likelihood that community benefits, again, not the ownership housing, not the affordable housing, but that community benefits are going to get people up to that level, because it really will impact us and the Bicycle Boulevard and everything else. So, anyway. Thanks.
Tim Curran.
Hi. Tim Curran, an Emeryville resident. I have some of the similar concerns that were just mentioned. And more put in a question form is why the bonus levels aren't considered to be lowered in one of the proposals by staff. I don't understand that. I don't understand why the base level is lowered but the bonus level remains and creates this potential for, as Donna put it, kind of this incongruity, this great density that's available to the developers. I just don't understand that. I would love some clarity on that. What I'm most struck with about the report is the RENA numbers. There's mention that developers and that Emeryville's not going to do its share, or we need housing in the Bay Area, 275 percent over RENA. We're really taking care of housing here in Emeryville. We have been doing it. And I don't understand why it's, well, it's very attractive for developers to use our system and to build here, and I think it will continue to be. As people put, it's a very desirable location, and there are a lot of large parcels becoming available. And I appreciate the system being reviewed and scrutinized so that there aren't abilities for the developers to take advantage of the system and to pack parcels with a density that isn't appropriate for the local communities. So I would just say, notice the RENA numbers and remember those when you're looking at the changes coming forward in these revisions. And I don't think the state bonus system is that scary of a thing, 35 percent over. The state has really looked at it, and back to RENA, RENA's really looked at it, and they have these lower levels for housing. These large community housing kind of studies have been made, and they've made these kind of more reasonable ranges for housing densities and housing goals. And I think that Emeryville has been very generous over time and could stand to tighten up their regulations. Thank you.
Paul Germain.
Hi. Paul Germain, Emeryville resident. I'd like to make two points this evening. One is that the regulations proposed this evening would create a huge emphasis on the bonus point process that is not there now. It would place one-half of a development's potential density and a bonus point determination, subject to a vetting of those proposed bonus points by city and staff. So that's never occurred before, where you have one-half of the project going to be all in bonus points. If you take an example with one that I'm familiar, which is the Sherman Williams Project, they propose 530 units of development in the last iteration. With this proposal and without bonus points, they would only be able to build 265 units. And so how valuable do those bonus points become? Let's pretend that this is 535 units. It doesn't look like 535. It's got land under it, and the land has landscaping on it, it's got roads on it, it's got parking on it, it's got lighting on it, and it's got a roof. So you lift the roof up a little ways, and then you slip in another 235 units.
(inaudible) microphone.
And then you slip in another 265 units, and you put the roof back on. You don't have to pay for the roof, because that's already on the original project. You don't have to pay for the land, because I'm assuming that the original 265 units pays for the land and pays for all the improvements and the architecture fees and so forth. So these 265 units become extremely valuable to the developer. They will be fought over. The additional 265 units at an arbitrary $3,500 per month rental rate is $11.13 million per year in additional gross income for the developer. And the question becomes, what is the additional gross income worth in terms of public benefit? Okay. Brings me to my second point, which is, the new emphasis on bonus points deserves more scrutiny in the public process. And it should add a new element to the public process. Because of their value, the bonus point calculation should be vetted in a transparent public forum, where they have the scrutiny of the public that is benefiting from those bonus points. Developers should not do the bonus point calculation. I don't think staff should either. It should be done at a public hearing as part of the planning process. In other words, another element in the planning process. And that's the vetting of the bonus points. Thank you.
Brian Hord.
Hello, Brian Hord, City Council. Hello. I've got some visual aids. This is from the Park Avenue Overlay District Plan that was approved. And I'm speaking about our small corner of the world near Blue Star Corner, where the Sherman Williams Development is And I just wanted to remind the City Council of what had happened before and what some of the height limits are, and to make sure that the new bonus plans don't go over what was decided earlier, as far as what the Park Avenue policies, Park Avenue Overlay District Plan outlines here. So this is page 16 of the plan, and you can see what the height limits are, which is 40 feet, 55 with conditional use permit, and 55 to 80 feet with a conditional use permit. So that's pretty clear. Let's just make sure that with the bonus points and everything else, we don't be in conflict with that. Also, there's another piece a few pages later, which I thought was kind of interesting as well. This sort of outlines the future of the project. People were looking forward when they wrote this, which also shows the 55-foot limit on the larger area with, to the north, where the larger buildings could be. And I think we're all pretty much in agreement for that. So if that has any impact on what some of the decisions are as far as this parcel, that's great. Thank you very much.
Randall Valley. Mr. Carpio, would you like to speak? And any other citizens who'd like to come forward?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have some remarks to do about the building itself. It appears that the bonus point, when I communicated with Mr. Brian there, that has been misleading, because it does not include the regeneration of energy in what per unit. What I'm saying is that this building, as far as I can see, is not sustainable in order to preserve the economy of the tenant. All it happens is that it product for the benefit of the developer. And any improvement thereafter would fall in the end and the responsibility of the tenant. So since there is not any preview to generate electricity as a base, then that doesn't include the water, the recycling water, because this is dependent on the agreement of East Bay MUD. But on the energy point of view here, there is something that needs to be done, that needs to be reviewed, is that the energy consumption by the tenant on top of the $3,500 monthly rent is really, really something that needs to be addressed. And the technology is there. You just need to implement it and make it as a condition of approval for the benefit of the tenant, not the developer. Thank you.
We have a handheld.
Could we get a hand microphone?
Karen's trying.
My name is Randall Wright. I think you got my name wrong, maybe. I worked as a Montessori teacher in Emeryville for many years. I currently live in North Oakland. And I just need to note, speak to two things here. One, just the massive
I just need to note, speak to two things here. One, just the massive inability of being able to get affordable housing, both on a teacher income, but also students and student loans. Even if you're making a decent income, there's no way to afford the housing here. I think it's clearly notable that the developers are always going to be making profit here. I think it's, I think it's fairly obvious that it's a joke if you think the buildings aren't going to happen because of the profit. And I really like to note the lack of diversity that's here. I just, if you were to speak to the wheelchair community or the community with disabilities, if you value us in your community, you would be wanting us to be here with affordability. I would also like to speak to racism. Emeryville has a history of being the center ground of people wanting to move out of West Oakland or East Oakland, and it was very much white racial boards that were keeping them out of living in Emeryville. And the idea that these communities are now priced out of living here for people living in San Francisco making engineer-type salaries, it's really crazy. So I'd actually like to say, I think it really should be considered to double the affordable housing in those percentages. And that may sound somewhat silly, but I really don't think it is. Thank you.
Evening. My name is Ryan Hademan. I'm an affordable housing architect, Emeryville resident. I wish to speak to concerns about whether these very strong regulations will in fact impact projects to the point where they do not become viable and have the ultimate result of not having housing built. Because at that point, then, rather than providing more affordable housing, we were providing less. Because when projects are built, then the more housing units are provided, then we know that the Affordable Housing Fund is increased. So if there is in fact a decrease in the amount of construction because the regulations make the financial feasibility less, or to the point of actually dropping below feasible, then we are hurting the provision or providing affordable housing. My suggestion would be to actually have some frank talks with some developers and find out at the points at which this starts to happen. And I am concerned that we, that this is a draconian regulation that you're talking about. Two other suggestions is, one is, I believe that projects that have worked out agreements before with the Planning Commission, with City Council, should be exempted from these regulations, because I personally don't think it's fair to have an agreement all worked out, all approved, all discussed in public hearings, et cetera, and then have it pulled back because of a new council. Even though I know you're all obviously very sincerely intended, I think it should, the city should have an honorable stance that promises are promises, and they should hold to those, even though there is a change. And the next suggestion that I have is, there should be exemptions for senior housing and special needs housing, such as this previous speaker spoke about, to many of these regulations. For example, while they should be categorically accepted, exempted, not just under a special use permit. For example, senior housing is almost only one-bedroom units, almost all the time. Special needs housing is one-bedroom units, oftentimes studios. And so I would suggest that that be included in this, in the new regulations. And finally, I think the, the sort of impact of the units that's been proposed or used by the staff, I calculate is $185,000 per unit, is what they're saying is the impact or value. That's a very low amount. So if you take, for example, the 14,857,000 impact and the 80 units, it's $185,000 a unit. In other words, I think the impact is much higher, so the cost of the proposed regulations is higher than is included in this table. Thank you.
So I listened closely to everybody said here tonight, and the people that can benefit materially themselves from having less regulation are against regulation. They want less regulation. And the residents who can't benefit materially from, you know, more development are against it. So there's no surprises there. So in other words, the residents want to keep our livability, make sure that stays, Emeryville stays at least what we are now, if not get better. And the developers are here to extract profit, and they're sycophants, and people that would materially benefit. So there's just really no surprises there. So I think you should take everybody's, you know, you should consider the source, always consider the source. But, you know, first of all, I would like to happily say that elections have consequences. And I'm, what we're seeing happening here is as a result of the last November's election. And so that's a good thing. People in Emeryville are getting what they want. And so that's, in a democracy, that's what's supposed to happen. However, I think that these, I'm inclined to agree with Mr. Germain, who said that this is too bonus point centric, and density bonus, all these density bonuses. We have to keep our eyes, I think, here on the prize, and that is, we should not be making Emeryville get worse over time. I think when a developer comes into our town, we should expect them to leave our town with the town becoming, if not better, at least staying the same, in quantifiable metrics that I've proposed in the past, like for instance, park acreage per resident. Locally serving retail, we can figure out a ratio, what exists right now, of how much locally serving retail we have as a ratio between non-locally serving retail, the formula retail. We have a ratio. That ratio should not be perturbed by new development. Affordability, we have a ratio right now of affordability. We can figure out what's affordable versus what's not. There's a ratio existing. So when a developer leaves our town after building his project, that number should not be perturbed. It should be, get better or stay the same. And then, of course, family friendliness as well. We have, there's a ratio right now of family-friendly housing that we have right now versus non. And when a developer leaves our town after doing their project, that number should stay the same or get better. So all these developers are here arguing that they, we must make your town get worse, otherwise we might not build your project. Which in fact, what they're saying is, if you don't let us have our way, we might not build projects that make your town get worse. So, yeah, I think that's, we should just go ahead and say, well, thank you anyway. If you're here to make our town get worse, you're not welcome here. But developers that want to make our town get better, contribute in quantifiable, measurable ways, welcome, Mr. Developer. Come on in. But we're not seeing them. Thank you.
Hello, Ken Bukowski. You know, affordable housing is probably the region's huge, biggest problem. And I'm going to propose a ballot measure, and we're going to have it right, which will be a local half-ten sales tax for affordable housing, because we need an immediate source of money, and we have a huge problem. But there are other ways to accomplish the gap that you have here by working with some of the folks in the region. If you act contrary to what we have in our general plan and the reduction housing, it's going to have consequences as far as getting regional money. Today was the first day that A-BAG and MTC had any discussion about displacement, and that's becoming a huge issue. So anyway, I think you have some options if you work with some of the regional staffs to bring some money to the city. Thanks.
Evening, John Bowders, resident. I just wanted to address a couple of things that were said by other people who commented today. Mike McConnell's question about getting families as opposed to college students, I'm not sure whether we can regulate that or not specifically in these guidelines. I'm in favor of leaving that flexible for developers and how they do this. But the state low-income housing tax credit actually requires, for affordable units funded by it, that it actually go to blood kin who are family, so you don't have the college student situation. We always encourage developers who are building affordable units, who are market-rate developers, to utilize the state low-income housing tax credit, because it relieves them of the burden of identifying low-income tenants for those projects. But one of the ways, there are multiple financial arrangements to help make that possible for market-rate developers. And if we don't put them as requirements, maybe we should make those tools and information accessible to them through the development process, so that we can actually achieve families. And the other thing is, I want to really echo what Ron Henry said. I do think that there's a need to discuss creating exemptions for special types of housing, as an advocate on senior housing issues and disabled housing and housing for people with special needs. It's critical if we are actually going to, and I don't know how realistic it is that a project like that would be built in Emeryville, but because these guidelines apply to 10 units or more, and some types of housing do meet the needs of people in 10-to-20 unit settings, it is important to give exemptions to those types of housing to make sure that we don't make it impossible for them to complete that project. Thank you.
Any other citizens to be heard? We'll bring you back to the council level. Any questions for Charlie? Any clarifications? Charlie, I just have one thing. For the benefit of the audience here in TV land, could you give a little more expanded definition of the green trip item? What that entails?
Well, that is a certification program that is offered by an organization called Transform. And it basically relates to reducing trips by vehicles, by having projects that have incentives for people to use other modes of transportation, cycling, walking, using transit, and so forth. We do have at least one project that is green trip certified in Emeryville, which I believe is the Intersection Project, 3800 San Pablo Avenue. They got that certification as, I'm not sure if it was required by the Planning Commission, but they, I think they voluntarily sought that certification.
Charlie, who is the group that gives out the certification?
Transform. The name of the organization is Transform.
And can you give us a little bit about what their veracity is, what their substance is?
Well, I know former council member West is a staff member there.
Right.
They're in Oakland. They are doing studies of trying to reduce trip generation, at least all over the Bay Area. I know they have a pretty robust program of offering these certifications to a variety of different projects all over the Bay Area.
And is there a charge for the certification?
That, I'm not sure.
It's not like the Silver Lead projects and things like that?
I'm not sure. We could provide more information about it to the council if you wish.
I have a question for the council. We have about 20 minutes. Do we feel we can complete these discussion questions and give direction to the staff as to what we want within that 20 minutes? Or is it your preference to continue this item to the meeting on the 15th?
I feel we can get through it.
I think we can too.
I think moving toward greater certainty is, should be one of our, our goals for everyone.
Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Davis?
Whoever you are.
Whoever you are. I might also suggest that since we do have a relatively short agenda for the regular meeting tonight, that if you don't get through it all by 7:15, we could just adjourn it until the end of the regular meeting, and then come back and conclude it at the end of the evening.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Let's try and get through it and then decide.
I agree with you, Jack. I think we can get through it. Okay, how do we want to handle this?
I have a question for Charlie. Charlie, several of our residents asked about lowering the bonus level. Can you talk a little bit about how the bonus level or the bonus points for each item was determined? Did we import that from the earlier draft?
Earlier draft of what?
Of the bonus menu, of the...
Well, the bonus level for FAR height and density for each of the different areas of town is set in the general plan. And that all came out of all the deliberations that were done over the five-year period that the general plan was developed, from 2004 to 2009. As far as the bonus point system, the current bonus point system, that similarly evolved, that's actually part of the planning regulations. It's not, the general plan says there shall be a point-based system for getting the bonus levels. It actually goes back to several decades, when the zoning in Emeryville, starting in 1988, I think, had two tiers for heights and densities. And it was just a conditional use permit to get the higher level. And a lot of developers just figured their project needed a conditional use permit anyway, so they just went for the additional density and height. And there was no special findings, and there was no special benefits they had to provide to do that. When the general plan was being updated, and the planning regulations were being developed, there was a feeling among the community and the Planning Commission and the council that developers should have to do something if they're going to get an increased density. They should give something in return. And so that is where the notion of a point system came from that, that was put into the general plan. The general plan didn't say what the point system would be. It just said that there would be one. And so when the general, when the planning regulations were developed, the point system was developed, that was the result of a whole series of meetings. We started out with something like 10 or 12 categories, and, you know, various planning commissioners and council members suggested adding different things to it. And we eventually ended up with the 19 categories that we have today. I don't know if that answers your question. Is that what you're looking for?
It kind of does. I'm wondering, I understand that we, we've come up with this, this bonus menu, but is there a reason, for example, that a certain item is assigned 50 rather than 25?
Oh, well, in, the concept previously was, before we factored affordable housing into this, which we actually haven't officially done yet, the concept was that a project would have to provide public benefits in at least three categories, if they needed 100 bonus points. They would have to provide benefits in at least three categories. And so rather than make it be 33 1/3 points, we made it 35. So most of the categories were worth 35 points, so that you'd have to get them from three categories. There were a few categories that were felt to be particularly important and desirable, and you wanted to incentivize those. So in those categories, the maximum was increased to 50 points. Family-friendly housing was one of the categories that was worth 50 points. Similarly, there were certain categories that were felt to be really not all that important, and maybe didn't want to offer even 35 points for them. So there were, I think, public art was one of those, where the maximum was 20 points. And there was something about enclosing rooftop equipment in a penthouse structure, and that was deemed to be worth 20 points. So that's, that's kind of where it came from. Well, under our proposed revisions, we would just simplify it and make everything be worth a maximum of 50 points, so that they could, they'd get half their points from the affordable housing, the other half from community benefits. They could potentially get all their points from one community benefit category, or they could, you know, do a variety of fewer points in more categories.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We've been asked to give direction to staff, and what is the pleasure of the council? My bias would be to go right down this list, take a reading from the council of agreement or non-agreement, and any comments that the council would like to make.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Yeah, that seems good.
Let's start with number one. And Scott, what is your feeling in this? Do you agree with this?
I like the proposed unit mix design guidelines. And the idea of exemptions leaves flexibility that seems good, and several speakers spoke about that need. And I also really appreciate the green trip certification.
So that's a yes for this particular...
For item one, yes.
Okay, Jack?
I think that for that, I, I'm going to echo Mayor Atkins' proposal for the unit mix, maybe prohibiting studio units except for special populations, or in the case of special populations and affordability. And I think that can be done through an exception process. That's fine with me. So the unit mix, I'm okay with that, but would like to look at prohibiting further studios. I am very supportive of the green trip certification. I think if, as you mentioned, Nora, if it's something that requires a fee, then if we have, if we have language in there talking about something being green trip equivalent, because what I'm, what I'm really looking for...
Yeah, we just want the bona fides for this group.
Yeah.
Jennifer's on it, it's probably straight arrow, but...
We do, we did include that language.
Right. And so, and when I look at this, I want to say that green trip certification, one of the ways that it's, I think, really a benefit to everyone in our town is that the complaint I hear most of all is about traffic, right, and about cars. And if we can get fewer cars in town, and also... can get fewer cars in town, and also build less parking, that's less expensive for developers. And I really hope that that's something that developers are, that they want to help with in our city. So I support both of those, but with the studio units prohibited.
Okay. And so that would be an option?
Yeah, one more thing. I, when we talk about exceptions, whatever the mechanism is for making an exception matters to me, whether it comes to us, or whether it goes before the planning commission. I want that outlined. Because I, I am not really interested in making Swiss cheese policy. I want it to be very clear. I want it to be very predictable. And I don't want people coming in, planning for their exceptions. If developers want to do that, there's another process for that, and it's called negotiation. So the way we frame or think about exceptions is really important to me.
Diane?
I am, I am in support of everything in item one. I also echo the mayor's question, can we prohibit studios? So I would like to look into that as well. And I am definitely in support of green trip certification. I brought it forward, and I think that is the direction we need to start looking in. I think developers should be given the flexibility to build more benefits for the community rather than for cars. And I want to appreciate Mr. Ma, Mr. Baker, and their respective firms for independently reaching out to Transform and looking into green trip certification for their respective projects.
I think that's the majority of the council. I would agree with these, with item number one. And I want to make a comment. I think that the staff has done a superb job here of responding in great detail, maybe more detail than we wanted, but in great deal detail, and with real care and consideration to what the majority of the council has asked for. So number one is a go, especially with the option of, and consideration of the studio units. Going to number two, the proposed reductions in base levels of FAR height and residential density levels.
Mr. Keenan wants to speak to number one, I think.
Excuse me, Vice Mayor. Sorry to interrupt. I also wanted to bring to the council's attention and to the public's attention as well that Mayor Atkins is excused tonight, but she had provided us with a list of her comments on these questions. They've been provided to you on the dais. They're also available to the public as well. So as part of your consideration, I'd just like to point and highlight that out to you. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, item number two. We'll start with you, Diane. Do you agree with that?
I do get, may I ask one question of Charlie? So there was a question in the audience about whether or not our total level of density, residential density was, that we're, that's being proposed is in conflict with, for instance, the Park Avenue District Plan. And I was wondering if you could just respond to that before I give my answer.
Short answer is no, it's not in conflict with the Park Avenue District Plan. The Park Avenue District Plan was actually adopted prior to our current general plan. And the general plan reflects the height limits and other provisions of the Park Avenue District Plan.
With that, I'm, I am in support of reductions in the base-
Jack, are you in support?
I agree, yeah.
Yes, so am I.
And I am too. Moving, you got that, Charlie?
Got it.
Moving along to three. Do you agree with the proposed two-tiered system for bonus points? Jack?
I do.
Scott?
I do. I'm concerned that, you know, I'm, I want to know is, if a developer wanted to do, if I understand this correctly, more than 50% in affordable housing, they could have 100%, but it can't go the other way. In other words, the two-tier system allows, is this correct by my saying this, Charlie? Allows for 100% affordable and no other community benefits, but it will not allow for all community benefits and no affordable.
That's correct. The way we've structured it is that if a project needed the full 100 points, well, they could only get 50 from affordable housing. And then they'd have to get the other 50 from the other community benefits. But if it needed, say, 50 points or less, they could potentially just get all 50 points by providing affordable units in the project and not do the other community benefits. The way it's worded, it says up to 50%, I mean, I'm sorry, it says no less than 50% of bonus points from affordable housing, and up to 50% from other community benefits. So what you have stated is correct. It wouldn't, it couldn't be the other way around.
Okay.
Diane, where do you come in on two-tier?
With two-tier, I have a question for Charlie as well. You know, a question came up with an audience member regarding the mechanism for vetting bonus points when it comes to community benefits. Can you talk about what, where we're at with the current system and where we could go that would give us that flexibility for community input?
I think we currently do a fairly good job of vetting potential community, public benefits for projects. Typically, the first public airing that a project has, certainly a major development project has, is a study session at the planning commission. And staff, before the study session, reviews the project and tries to highlight issues that we think the commission should, you know, address. And so we come up with questions, kind of like these questions, saying, you know, what do you think of this? What do you think of that? And if it's a project that requires bonus points, one of the things we always ask the commission is, what do you think the categories of bonus points should be that this project should get? The developer may or may not have proposed some. Staff may have identified some that might be desirable. We ask the commission to weigh in. That's at a public meeting where the community then has an opportunity also to weigh in. And that issue of what are the appropriate categories of bonus points comes back every single time that project is before the commission or council for a public hearing. I'm sure you've heard us ask you about projects, what do you think are the appropriate bonus points? So that's about as public as we can make it. And ultimately, it's up to the decision-makers, either you or the planning commission, as to whether or not you want to approve those bonus points.
Well, thank you for that clarification, Charlie, and I support.
Okay, Scott, item number four, affordable housing provisions.
Okay, it's my understanding that this is, has to do with the ratio of low, I mean, very low, low, and moderate, accepting that we have to balance that mix. And also that this proposal is to increase the fees on the non-residential building bonus points. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. We're talking about this chart here and this chart here. So it's basically, ah, come on, that.
And do you support that, Scott?
Yes, I do. I think that it will give us more balance than we currently have in the ratios of very low, low, and moderate. And I just think that if we increase fees on the non-residential contributors, I think our city can still get development, because we have overall costs in Emeryville for other things like property tax, business license tax are lower, in fact, than our surrounding communities. So I think we can sustain that. So I support that.
How about you, Jack?
Yes.
Okay. And Diane, you have, and I'll go along with that. Item number five, does the council agree with the proposed modifications to the list of community benefits eligible for bonus points? Jack, we'll start with you.
Yeah. So for me, the small business requirement, I'm, that's worth a lot of points, and I don't really know what that is. And the other thing is, how can we ensure that the small business would stay in business over time, and that it would be locally serving? So I have a lot of questions about that, but it just, it feels overly vague for me. And I, what I would like is a shorter menu, less options. And, you know, that, I still want to point out that developers can always negotiate with the city for things that are specific to their site. They can listen to the community. They can come back and they can talk to us. So that's one that I'm really not comfortable with, nor the flexible community benefit. So I'm, I'm not sure that I want that on there. For me, I really want to underline that what we're looking for in town and what our, our policy direction has been is that we want family-friendly units. I think public open space is really important. And I just, I don't want a long menu. I'm, I can see here that we eliminated many things. I'm appreciative of that. But at least those two as well.
Mayor, Vice Mayor?
Is it?
I want to get rid of small business and flexible community benefit.
May I just clarify?
Before you jump in, Charlie, I'd just like to say that I have your same concern with the small business, but, because I don't believe we have anything established or set up that is really viable to do a small business fund. So, but I would like to have that option for the future, when the Economic Development Committee and the Economic Development Staff pull something together with real substance. So could we just?
I think it's too many points, then.
May I just respond? The idea of the small business donation is that when we had redevelopment, we used to have a small business loan program, and we had a facade grant program, all funded by redevelopment. We don't have either of those programs anymore. And we had other tools that we could use to try to help small businesses. The idea here would be to create a funding source where we could begin to replace what we used to do for small businesses when we had redevelopment. And concerning the amount, the formula for that would be the same as the formulas for the other things. So you would get the same number of bonus points for the same monetary contribution that you would get for open space or undergrounding or whatever. So it's all proportional. But if you feel that small business should be given less emphasis than the other things, we could, well, we could eliminate it entirely, or we could just reduce it to, say, 25 point maximum points, or something like that. Concerning the flexible benefit, that actually is what you were talking about. When you said you want to leave it open for developers to come in and negotiate other benefits with the council or the planning commission, that's what the flexible community benefit is.
Okay, so it's not part of the menu. It's outside of that?
Well, it's part of the menu, but it just says it's a currently undefined community benefit proposed by the applicant that's significant and substantially beyond normal requirements. And the point calculation is that planning commission or city council, as the case may be, shall determine the number of points to grant for that proposed benefit. If you determine that it's worth zero, then you give it zero.
Doesn't the planning commission, though, not necessarily deal with the cost and the finances of projects? Like, when we determine value, then for me, it would be important that that, a flexible community benefit is vetted by the council.
Okay.
I agree, it should be vetted by the council. But what I really like about the flexible community benefit is it can be tailored to the site specifically, can really make potentially creative designs that the developer could come up with for this place that we just don't even know about. And I think it's a good benefit, just because it's going to create things we can't even imagine now that could be great, and we'll judge whether they're great or not in the future. So I really strongly think we should keep that in there. And I agree that the small business section should be reduced.
Diane?
I'm with Scott.
Okay. You got direction there? Okay. And-
Excuse me. I wasn't sure about the small business exception. Was that reduced, or was that eliminated?
I think the majority wants to reduce.
Just reduce. And that's open for discussion when it comes back, both to the planning commission and the council. All right. The condominium map, item number six. Let's start with you, Diane.
I support.
Scott?
I support that.
Support it.
And I support it. Seven, does the council wish to increase the affordable housing impact fee and accordingly modify the percent and/or income level of units to be provided in lieu of paying the affordable housing impact fee?
Charlie, can you show us the chart?
Sure.
Thank you.
We'll start with you, Jack.
Well, I'm waiting for the chart.
Okay.
I do, I do want the fee increased. Yes.
That chart?
So you do want it increased?
I, I would propose 28.
Scott, what do you say?
Well, it's, I have a question for Charlie, or somebody who could address what it would be like for Emeryville. I know we have a lower tax rate for our property tax than Berkeley, for example. And I know that our business license tax is quite a bit lower than Berkeley. But this additional higher amount, you know, in the, in the cost to a developer, do you think that it's going to push development away from Emeryville and to our competing cities? You know, is there some market sense of how far 28 would push us in ratio to the other cities? I mean, this is a proportional evaluation. So it's kind of a difficult question to answer about-
I know. I mean, when we did the fee study last year, and we brought these charts to you to talk about, and one thing that we emphasized was that this is just development costs. There are other expenses of projects, but it's difficult to compare those to the development costs. Property tax, for example, that's something a project has to pay every year on an ongoing basis. Yeah, they're different in different cities. But trying to add that in, and things like that into this, which are basically one-time development costs, is sort of apples and oranges. So, so we didn't factor all those other things in. But if you just look at development fees, then the $28,000 fee would make us higher than these other cities that we have compared ourselves to.
One thing, though-
What does 23,000 look like?
That puts us just below Berkeley. Whoops, wrong way. That's that.
Can I say one thing, though? That the developers have a mechanism for covering their costs, and that's increasing rent. So they're, they, they are, while it's, while it's a little bit higher, we don't have, I think we're still a really desirable place to be, right? And if they're going to pay the in lieu fees, you know, one of the things we can do is if our fee is higher, then we can ensure that we're getting the housing on site.
Well, that is a very good point.
Or at least try to signal that that's what we want, which is what I'm trying to do. And I've, I've spoken with the developers, and I feel like we all understand each other on that point. On that point, what we want in Emeryville is we want the affordable housing on site, right?
So the number that has stuck out with me, and thank you, Charlie, and your whole department, for all of the incredible amount of work that you have done, and for the clarity of this report, it was really outstanding to me. I very much appreciate it. The number that kept coming back to me is the percentage of below-market-rate units that we have in Emeryville right now. And I, that number is 11.17, if I understand correctly. And if that number were to translate to development impact fee with a focus on very, excuse me, on low-income homes, I had a brief conversation with Charlie before the meeting started. I think, Charlie, if I'm correct, that translates to north of 30,000 for an impact fee, more closely to 32,000. So I just want to re-anchor this conversation, and to say to not slip back, to not lose what we have now in terms of our supply of below-market-rate housing as a percentage of our total units in Emeryville, we would have to step up to that fee. Now, anchoring the conversation at that number-
I'm the odd man out here. I'd go with 23, but you have your direction. It's 28,000. Do you need any more direction, Charlie?
Uh, yes.
You've come to the end of the question.
I have, but it raises more questions.
Oh, no, no, no. You had your shot. Okay, go ahead.
Do you want to modify the income level here then? So if you're at 28,000, do you want to go to very low, 11.6, or low-income, 9.7? Or do you want to make it a mix of the two? Or what, what do you want to do about the in-lie option?
Would you be able to present us with options at a later date?
More context.
With context, with what's doable, with what makes the most sense for the community and for the development community?
I could do that. We were, the scheduled call for going to the Planning Commission next and then back to you for the actual hearing. I don't know if you want to do it in the context of that or if you just want us to bring it back to another study session.
I would be fine with it going to planning and coming back to us.
Okay.
I would, too.
Is that going to delay everything?
No.
No, that'd keep it right.
Oh, that will keep it on track.
Okay, but I'm for that.
Okay. Then I do have one other question, which is going back, I'm sorry, but going back to this chart here.
Yes?
If we raise the fee to $28,000, that is now equivalent to this level down here, roughly. Do you want us to increase all of these percentages proportionally so that the, it starts at 28 over here and then increases from there?
I do.
Yes?
Yeah.
What is the effect of that?
Uh, well, I can't tell you without re-crunching the numbers, but I can tell you that the, to get five points, you would then need to provide about 15 and 1/2 percent. I would say all of these numbers will probably go up by about 4 percent.
I'm in support.
Unless, well, we could, we could compress it somewhat, maybe. But, yeah. So you would like us to adjust this chart?
I would. I would like them to adjust the chart.
Have your answer.
Those are all my questions.
Are you done?
I am done. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Charlie.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank everyone who came tonight with their ideas and suggestions. This meeting is adjourned. We'll take a five-minute break till we go into the city council meeting.
Very brief meeting before the city council meeting. And Karen, can I call that to order?
Just give me about one minute and I'll pick it up. Okay. We have to do the resolutions and say, Charles, I'm here.
This is, I'm calling to order the city council meeting as a successor agency to the Emeryville Redevelopment Agency. Please call the roll and note that Mayor Atkins is excused and Ms. Asher will be with us presently.
Councilmember Asher will be in presently. Councilmember Donahue.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez. Vice Mayor Davis.
Here.
And Mayor Atkins is excused.
All right. Are there any public comments pertaining to the successor agency agenda? There being none, I would entertain a motion on the consent calendar.
So moved.
I second.
Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Asher, excused. Councilmember Donahue.
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Yes.
And Mayor Atkins is excused.
This meeting is adjourned. I'll now call to order the city council meeting for Tuesday, September 1st. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Let y'all get together here on the pledge. And let the roll call reflect that we're all still present and Mayor Atkins is excused. We have some special orders of the day. The first one is Charles Greer in Apple Yard will do the honors.
Can we just finish the successor agency?
Yes. Vice Mayor Davis and council members, thank you. We have the Employee of the Quarter Award. We come to you once a quarter to recognize employees and this year it's, or this quarter it's Charles Greer. And if I can ask Charles to come on up and there's something for the Vice Mayor to read for us.
Mr. Greer, we meet again.
Yes, we do.
On behalf of the city council staff and the residents of Emeryville, I'm proud to avoid, award you, Charles Greer, Employee of the Quarter Award for the first quarter of 2015. Charles started his career with the city of Emeryville as a civilian clerk dispatcher in 1982, was promoted to code enforcement officer, building inspector in 1989, and has served admirably ever since. He is currently responsible for performing field inspections of complex and are-they commercial and residential projects throughout Emeryville. According to his nominator, Charles is always friendly, personable. In one instance, a contractor needed an electrical inspection at the end of the day and no staff or consultants were available. If the inspection did not occur, then tenants in the apartment would not have electricity. Charles was called and responded, even though it was not his project and it was after hours. He recognized the urgency and the importance of establishing electrical service to apartment tenants, which included children. The nominator states Charles has a good heart. Charles is an exemplary employee who has provided excellent service to the city of Emeryville during his 33-plus years of service. As part of the Employee Recognition Award, Charles receives an award plaque, a gift certificate to an Emeryville restaurant. If it's bouche's, use it right away. He will also have his picture prominently displayed at City Hall and lunch with the city manager and Ian. Congratulations, Charles.
Thanks, Charles.
It's a pleasure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you all. Thanks for coming, Charles. Our next special order is the resolution honoring Angela Williams. Who's going to take care of that for me?
I am.
Oh, very good, very good. Come up. Do you want to come up to the podium, Angela? Come up. Come on, gather together here.
Resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville honoring Angela Williams upon her retirement from the city of Emeryville Child Development Center after 19 years of continuous service. Whereas, whereas after 19 years of devoted and remarkable service to the Child Development Center, Angela Williams announced her plans to retire. And whereas Ms. Williams was hired into the Emeryville Child Development Center as a teacher aide on September 9th, 1996, and was promoted to program coordinator June 16th, 2011, and then to a family subsidized specialist October 3rd, 2012. And whereas Ms. Williams went on to receive her master's degree in education in order to continue to provide the most current trends in early childhood education. And whereas Ms. Williams worked very closely with students and families of diverse cultures and demographics to make sure every child had an opportunity for quality education. And whereas Ms. Williams has earned the admiration and respect of her fellow staff and managers by the way in which she carried out her responsibility. Therefore, be it resolved that the city council of the city of Emeryville hereby commands and admires the dedicated service of Angela Williams and wishes her well and enjoying the next chapter in her life in retirement. Adopted by the city council of the city of Emeryville at the regular meeting held Tuesday, September 2015.
We're going to miss you, Angela.
Thank you, Angela.
And next we have a resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville honoring George Warren upon his retirement from the city of Emeryville after 37 years of continuous and honorable service.
Come on, big guy.
Yeah.
Come on, come on.
Don't, he's going to hit his head. Yeah.
I am Chip Anderson from the Alameda County Fire Department and I am proud to present resolution number 15-105. Resolution of the city council of the city of Emeryville honoring George Warren upon his retirement from the city of Emeryville after 37 years of continuous and honorable service. Well, that's what it says. I don't know. I mean, that's longer than some people have been.
Come on, George, this is serious.
Not honorable. Continuous.
George Warren was first hired in 1978 by city council resolution to serve in the Economic Development Department as an administrative intern and subsequently as an administrative assistant in 1980, and then as administrative aide in 1983. George Warren is most notable as being the city's fire prevention inspector from 1985 to 2012, and then joining the Alameda County Fire Department as deputy fire marshal assigned to serve the city of Emeryville from 2012 until his retirement in 2015. During his 30-year tenure as fire prevention inspector and then deputy fire marshal, George Warren conducted approximately 3,000 fire inspections in the city of Emeryville and reviewed over 1,800 building permits. And George has conducted his work with an exceptional attention to customer service and during his tenure. George has also been a consummate professional who has been instrumental in contributing to the city's quality of life. And George could always be counted on for bad puns, coffee runs to Pete's, an unwavering and infamous sense of humor. And George's positive energy, wide expertise and consummate professionalism will be sorely missed. Now therefore be it that the city of Emeryville, city council of the city of Emeryville hereby extends its sincere appreciation to George Warren for 37 years of continuous and honorable service to the Emeryville community, and be it further that the city council of the city of Emeryville wishes George Warren well as he enters the next chapter of his life.
Absolutely.
Congratulations, Charles.
Few remarks, George.
Vice Mayor Davis?
Yes.
I have a little bit to add.
Oh, very good.
We, we're going to propose naming a street after George. However.
That's a tall order.
That was a tall order, yeah. And since he's not dead yet, we thought we probably shouldn't do that. So instead, we're just going to give him the sign and he can put it wherever he wants.
Ah.
It's in place of the gold watch?
George Warren.
Economic times, George, economic times.
I got a poster, the apartment photographer.
Hold on, hold on.
Hold on, one more.
That's great. Thank you, George.
Thank you, George.
Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor? Both, both the resolutions for Angela and for George need a motion and a second and a vote.
So moved.
I second.
Without objection, both motions pass. Thank you once again. Now we'll go, we'll go into public comment. I'm going to call five names. I'd like you to line up so that we can move this along. Looks like we have a lot of speakers. And then at the fifth person, I'll read the next five names. So we have Jennifer Lynn, Leano, T.H., Jake Friedler, and Heather Thompson. Do you want to line up and come forward and speak your piece? Jennifer? This is Jennifer Lynn.
I'm actually for the consent calendar, but I'm just...
I beg your pardon?
I submitted a card for the consent, an item on the consent calendar.
Oh, okay. All right. Leano.
How much time do I have?
Three minutes.
Three minutes, all right. Well, I come here, my name is Leano. I've been living here for 18 years, and I come to make a public comment on the insanity that's going on inside of this city hall right now on desecrated land in regards to the slang that was right around the corner, right around the corner from my house that is not being recognized, and in fact is not even being a paying attention to right now. Who do you represent? Who do you really represent? That's what I want to know. I come here to bring perspective on the land that you guys are talking on right now, the shell mound desecration that's going on right now, the ritualistic stuff that's going on right now, the fact that over the last 18 years, this place has turned into an outdoor mall. And you guys are sitting in here talking about paperwork and numbers and rent and all this other shit, and nobody in here is talking about what the people are talking about. You need to have a People's Council. You need to have a Land Council. You need to stop talking about things that are on the surface layer of all this stuff and talk about money and start talking about what's happening to the people of this land and what's here before this, before this building was even put up, the reason why the police are being militarized right now. This little town, so-called little town, with big-ass Pixar and all those other companies down there, you guys are trying to protect what's in their pockets. And the fact that none of you guys are standing up for what's really going on underneath, because if you were, you wouldn't be sitting behind here on these chairs right now. There's too many people getting killed in and around Emeryville for stuff that deals directly with the militarization of these police department. What the hell is Emeryville doing with a militarized police department? How did you all let that happen here? How did everybody on this council, including the mayor, who doesn't even have the balls to even come down here and sit down and talk to the people face-to-face? How? You guys are not taking this seriously because you are in an insane perspective. You are in an insane place of being because you are not representing the people. You are representing money. You are representing illusions. And you have, you have no sense of understanding the heart of the people. How dare you? How fucking dare you? Bring somebody in here and talk about naming a street after this dude? With all due respect to him, but we are here talking about somebody who was just murdered by your police department. Can you not open your heart to understand what the fuck is going on around here in and around this city? It is money. It is slang. These are lynchings, okay? These are lynchings on the streets. And not one of you are going to get out of your pockets and out of your mind and into your heart to understand how deep this goes. Bay Street Shell Mound, indigenous land.
Your time is up, sir.
Thank you.
Pardon me, could I ask if you're going to feel strongly about something? If you have a piece of paper in your hand, wave your paper instead of clapping. That's kind of what we do here. If you can join us in that, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. TH is the only name I have here. You TH? Okay.
We are all here to discuss the dishonest withholding of Yvette Henderson's autopsy report following her murder by the Emeryville Police Department. We demand justice, we demand honesty, and we demand closure for the Henderson family and loved ones. Also, we demand justice to be served to the public by imprisonment of the two officers who stole her life. That deserves acknowledgement, justice, and respect.
Jake Friedlander, please note applause. Jake Friedlander.
I'd just like to echo the comments of the last two speakers. I'm here with many other people from all around the East Bay who are demanding justice for Yvette Henderson, who was killed by the Emeryville Police Department following a series of events which began with the claim that she might have been shoplifting at Home Depot, hardly a death sentence of a crime, but made possible due to the fact that the Emeryville Police Department is severely militarized, over-militarized. She was shot with multiple different weapons, including an automatic rifle, the likes of which is used by the US military. And the fact that such weapons are even used by the police department anywhere in American cities is pretty absurd, but especially in a small, pleasant place like Emeryville, it just blows my mind. So we're here to call for two different things. First of all, the demilitarization of the Emeryville Police Department, getting rid of automatic assault rifles, that's not keeping anyone safe. And as someone that comes to shop in Emeryville, knowing that police around here are walking around with those kind of weapons, actually makes me feel a little bit less safe, although I'm sure I have not as much to worry about as the people of color like Yvette Henderson who face this kind of violence day-to-day in this country. So we're here to call for that demilitarization, but also for you as the Emeryville City Council to do anything in your power to get the Alameda County Sheriff and the coroner to release the autopsy report so that Yvette's family and the other people in this community who care about her can get some answers that they're looking for in why this unjust death happened, how was she killed, and they can move forward in the search for justice and peace on this issue. So thank you for listening to us today.
Heather Thompson. And Heather, could you wait a minute while I call the next five? Colleen Husk, Jason Wallach, Lana Ashley, Lynn Levy, and Amanda Bloom. Heather.
Yvette Henderson was a mother, a grandmother, and a sister who did not deserve to die. She was suspected of shoplifting, and she was attacked while at the Home Depot, and she sustained a head injury before she fled the police and was ultimately shot in the head with a military assault rifle in broad daylight. And so we're here to demand the release of the autopsy report to Yvette's family. What are you hiding by not releasing it to her family? So we're here to demand transparency now and justice for Yvette and her family.
Colleen Husk.
Hi, I'm an Oakland resident, and I'm here to demand the same thing, that you urge the coroner to release the autopsy report for Yvette Henderson's family. And I also wanted to very briefly share part of why I'm here tonight. Imagine if your family member was murdered, and then months, six, eight months later, you needed to get this much community support just to get a coroner's report released. It is such a further injustice on that family that they have to do this and that they have to gather this much community support just to ask for a coroner's report to be released. And that's not even a step towards justice, but it's something. So that's why I'm here, because they shouldn't have to do that. They shouldn't have to have all these people here just to demand that. And it's the least this council can do to have that report released. Thank you.
Jason Wallach.
My name is Jason Wallach. I'm a small business owner in Oakland, California. I understand the Oakland police were also part of this, so this implicates all Oakland residents as well. I'm here to support the demands both of the family and of the movement here to demand a coroner's report. I don't understand, it's untenable for me to understand how public servants can't do their job within six, eight months on something that really should just, you know, shouldn't be that difficult. Obviously, to me, it's a political issue that this has not been resolved or released so far. And I can understand, I feel outraged, and I think that the folks that are expressing themselves today are justified in feeling that. I'm part of a group called SURGE, which is called, stands for Showing Up for Racial Justice. It's a group of folks that work in white communities to demand, to get white folks to really step up and speak up around issues of racial injustice. We have now had two canvases here in Emeryville. We've met some of you on those canvases. And what we found is that there's a groundswell of understanding for what, for, of this issue as a racial, as an issue of racial injustice. We're not going to stop organizing around this. We're going to continue to push for justice in the case of Yvette. And I urge you to do the right thing.
Lynn Levy.
My name is Lynn Levy, and I also work with SURGE, Showing Up for Racial Justice, and I also participated in that canvas yesterday. We got over 100 petitions, people who signed a petition demanding that you, the City Council, get the coroner's office to release the autopsy report for Yvette. 95% of the people we talked to in Emeryville signed that petition. So the people in your community want you to release that report and also want the military, the militarization of the police department to stop immediately.
Amanda Bloom. Amanda, could you hold up while I call the next five? Hannah Warren, Madeline Taylor, Samir Sonamso, and Daniel Lewis. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm here with all these other folks. I agree with everything that's been said so far. One of the things that really concerns me is that Yvette Henderson, a mother, a grandmother, was killed allegedly for shoplifting. There is no reason for the police to sit there and pass judgment on someone and to kill them, even if she had shoplift. And I don't, we don't know whether that was true or not. Also, during the course of her encounter at Home Depot, she was hit over the head. I'm a healthcare worker, and I know that the kind of head wound that she sustained may have made her act in ways that weren't what she might have done if she had not had that head wound. And I think we really have to look at those instances. This happened, I believe, because she's an African-American woman, and we are having a series, hundreds of African-American people all across this country who are killed by the police, who act as the trial, the taking out and passing judgment on people. There's nothing we can do after someone is dead. The one thing that you all can do is lend your weight to the coroner's office, the Alameda Sheriff, to release that coroner's report, to be able to let the family see what happened to Yvette. And also, I think it's really important to look at the issue of the militarization of your police department. We know that police departments all across the country are having AK-47s, as your police department did. It's just too much. There's no reason to have that kind of a weapon that's used in war against citizens. I come from Oakland, and I accept that there was responsibility from the Oakland police also. But we need to turn this around. And you all seem like the kind of people who would not really want to go out and murder people in broad daylight, which is what happened to this woman. I think you really have to look at what's happening. It's not okay to murder somebody as a suspect for shoplifting. It's not okay for black people to be murdered every single day. Thank you.
Madeline Taylor.
You read my name, but I wasn't called. Leana Ashley, you said?
Yeah. Well, come forward.
My name is actually Karen Ashley, and I'm here, I agree with everything that people have said before me. I think that the capital punishment, basically, that was meted out to Yvette Henderson was just an abomination and just one of the many instances of black people's lives being taken by police across the country. Not just now, there's, because of cell phones, because of public media, we're able to actually see it. It's been going on since, since the beginning of this country. I also want to speak to the issue of militarization of the weapons that the police department has here in Emeryville. She was killed with an assault weapon. Assault weapons are used in war. In a way, in a very concrete way, the police are saying, "We are at war. We are using weapons that were developed for war." And those of us who support Black Lives Matter, who believe deeply that Black Lives Matter, people living in any community of color, feel that there is and has been a war against the people in those communities. We're here, I'm here to ask that those weapons be withdrawn. They have no, no place in the Emeryville community, and that the coroner's report be released to the family. It's been way too long. They've been asking for that for way too long. Thank you.
Samir? Samir here?
I'm just here with the community, yes. I'm just here with everyone.
You don't want to speak? Okay. Sonamso.
Hi, I'm really here just to echo what's already been said. As a Tibetan-American, I also grew up down the street on Vallejo for quite a while. I have a lot of family, a lot of friends who live in this city, and I think, you know, the direction that it's going right now is definitely not the direction it should be, militarization of police force. I mean, really ask yourself, is that necessary? Because it's really not. As a Tibetan, these are the kinds of things I expect to hear from the Chinese military, from the Chinese government, that are killing our people every day. It's not something I want to hear in America where, you know, my parents escaped that brutality, and they did not come here to witness that again happening to our other brothers and sisters here. So please find in your heart to at least, you know, the very least, it's not, we shouldn't even have to, like, people shouldn't have to ask for a coroner's report. You know, that is part of your job. That is part of the people's jobs to release that information. So please, just step up, do your job, and thank you very much.
Daniel Lewis. Daniel, could you hold up a minute, and I'll call some other names. Vienna Okasha Hingle Webster, David Welsh, Robin B., and Lila Bugara. Okay, go ahead, Daniel.
As you know, Yvette Henderson is the mother, grandmother, a loved person, a human being, that was killed right down here by y'all's police force. It's been months with the family struggling to come to some kind of peace about their loved one who they lost unjustly in an instant, in a moment, that these people should have just unders, these people should not have access to these weapons, let alone have the authority to declare a death sentence on a human being who was already in a position of, had already been assaulted. I mean, it's horrendous. And for this family to be suffering for this long without any official report by the police, by the coroner's office, it's despicable. And something needs to be done. I mean, release the report. Let this family move on, or at least begin to make the next step in this grieving process, which is still ongoing. And by withholding this report, it's just sinking that anchor deeper and deeper. And y'all, I know you have the authority, you have the power, and I'm sure, I would hope, the heart to release this information, to release these reports, and to do whatever you can to help this family through this. You have to do it.
O'Davis Hiego Webster? I really mashed that up, but do you want to repeat your name so you get a fair chance that people...
My name is Octavio Hingle Webster.
My name is Octavio Hingle Webster.
Thank you.
I was born and raised in Berkeley, California, just a little bit over here. And I just want to ask you guys, do you care about other humans? Do you care about other humans' lives? Because I just imagine the trauma that this family must be facing, it must be continuing to face. And I hope you guys are really listening to us because the trauma of not even hearing back, you know, since February about the details of somebody who you know being murdered is really sickening. It's disgusting and it makes me nauseous. And I really hope that you guys have it in your hearts to demilitarize your police force, to get the coroner's report set in, and think about how Black Lives Matter can really change this country, how the police are at war with people of color in this country. Thank you.
David Welsh.
Hello, my name is David Welsh and I don't live in Emeryville, but I do shop here and occasionally eat here. And even if I had no connection at all with Emeryville, I think this is a matter of justice, it's a matter of human rights, and it's something that concerns everyone. You know, in Germany, as everyone knows, there were approximately 6 million people or more than that who were killed in a genocide. And there were a lot of people who lived in Germany who knew this was going on or suspected it was going on, but didn't do anything about it. Well, I think we're in a comparable situation here. First of all, as the brother spoke, the first person who spoke, there was the genocide of the native peoples of this country, including who established the showmounds here, right here in Emeryville. There was the genocide of African-Americans. A hundred million Native Americans and approximately 100 million African-Americans in the Western Hemisphere were killed and kidnapped or enslaved. And now we have a new chapter in this genocide against native people, and particularly lately against African-American people. And I think it's very important that citizens' bodies, like the Emeryville City Council, take a stand on this. And even a small city like Emeryville can make a difference in turning the tide, turning back this epidemic of police murders of black people. And I think if the, to start with, I think the Emeryville City Council could take a position on the murder of Yvette Henderson. They could take a position on the extensive murders of African-American people. And they could take a resolution demanding that the coroner's report be released by the Alameda County Coroner. Because this is a withholding of evidence, is what it is. It's unconscionable. It's withholding of evidence, in addition to the pain it causes to the family, which is already suffering due to the loss of their loved one. So I'd like to urge the council to do the right thing, reach into your hearts, and take a real stand here for justice. Thank you.
Robin B.
Hi, my name is Robin and I'm an educator and I live in Oakland. But what brings me up here today is that almost seven months ago to the day Yvette Henderson, a mother and grandmother, was gunned down in the street for, in alleged misdemeanor, in alleged misdemeanor. Gunned down with military-grade weaponry by men who thought themselves to be judge, jury, and executioners, I suppose. And we wonder why the cry of Black Lives Matter like echoes across this land right now. I think that Emeryville is now on a list of infamy up there with Ferguson, New York, Baltimore, and also Charleston. And I think you have an opportunity now to lift some of that shame from the atrocity and release that coroner's report, release the police report. It's the decent thing to do. Thank you.
Lila Bugara. Lila, hold up a minute and let me call the next, next names. Tova Frye, Ruby, Thora Coyle, Kiri Kubah, and Steve Martinut. I beg your pardon?
It seems if the two of us are there. They were called up, but they have to get my call this.
They were in the last batch of names.
Oh, okay, okay. Go ahead, Lila.
Good evening. My name is Lila Bugara. There are a few words to describe the tragedy that is Yvette's murder. A grandmother, a loved mother, her family is now forced to experience what is honestly one of the worst realities, losing a loved one to murder, let alone to murder at the hands of the state. On top of that, it's unconscionable that nothing has happened, and I mean nothing. The reality is that if Yvette had looked like me, she would have never been killed. I have shoplifted. I know a number of other white people that have shoplifted. I know a number of other white people that have been armed and arrested by police, which is another allegation thrown at Yvette. And they were arrested peacefully. They weren't murdered in cold blood. And I say that to say that this has everything to do with white supremacy. Emeryville, as many other people have mentioned, is one amongst many, many cities that are fighting an epidemic of police violence against black people. Black women are three to four times more likely to be stopped by police and arrested for the same offense, quote unquote, the same issue, as white people. Black youth are 21 times more likely to be killed by police, and black adults overall are five times more likely to be shot by police. I urge you to not only release the autopsy report and compel the coroner's report to do that, I also call for the prosecution of every single officer involved in this killing, their immediate firing, an investigation into the police culture in Emeryville that has led to this type of racist killing, and accountability for her family in addition to financial reparations. Thank you.
Tova Frye.
We have the two other people that didn't get to go.
Oh, you two come up. Very sorry.
Hi, my name's Maddie Taylor. And I just mostly want to echo everything that everybody has said. I assume that you all became council members or mayor and vice mayor because you wanted to kind of like have a positive effect on this, on this city. And to me, you're not doing that unless you are standing up with what the people are saying and the people are asking, not only for her coroner's report to be released, which is like so very much the least that people could do, but as was mentioned earlier, like taking an actual stance on the Black Lives Matter movement and on police militarization and police culture of not de-escalating situations, but instead engaging violently with people and not taking into consideration situations like being hit on the head and possibly having, with Yvette Henderson having been hit on the head and possibly like having her, her mental state be influenced by that, something that she couldn't control. So yeah, I think that if you came to be a council member or a mayor and you want to be able to make a difference in the city, then that's something very concrete that you can do and influence other cities to do. Like, once a city can, once one city starts doing it and starts making like a vocal statement that Black Lives Matter, then many other cities will understand that it's, it will set a precedence and let other cities start to do it. So, thank you.
So sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. I remember back when I first saw and read about Yvette's murder and reading the details of what happened, things didn't quite add up. When you just read the very, the first day it happened, you read it and you're, it doesn't make sense. So I would keep reading about it and more and more didn't make sense. And I remember reading something that was like, oh, I think, I think we'll get more details when the coroner's report comes out. And it still hasn't come out. So I'm here to, to demand police transparency when police kill people and justice for Yvette and the demilitarization of the police force. So, thank you.
Tova Frye.
So Yvette Henderson was essentially killed for shopping while black, along with countless other black Americans, African-Americans around the country who have been killed for driving while black, selling a single cigarette while black, playing with a toy gun while black, standing on a street corner while black. There's countless instances of people around the country who have been killed for the crime of having black skin. We need to deal with this for what it is. We have, we're in a state of extreme white supremacy controlling what's going on in this country. And the police are treating communities of color as if they're occupying armies. And this has to stop. Yvette Henderson was a young mother and grandmother, missed by her family dearly. And she was injured while she was shopping and asked for an ambulance, and instead they called the police. Now, I know that the Emeryville Police Department has completed its report and the Oakland Police Department has completed its report, according to Diane Martinez, who I met yesterday, while talking to a number of people in Emeryville. And so I don't understand why the coroner's report has to wait to be released. It should have been released right away, as soon as it was done. It doesn't have to be tied to the completion of these other reports at all. And we know that it's not you that controls that report, but you can certainly put a lot of weight on getting it released if you so choose. And that's what we're asking you to do. We're asking you to put that weight on the Alameda County Coroner's Office to release that report. And also, we're asking you to demilitarize the Emeryville Police Department. There's no reason that AR-15s or other military-grade weapons should be in the hands of any police force in this country or used against the citizens of this country or the people that live in this country who aren't citizens. It doesn't matter, they should not be used. The police should not be occupying armies. And when they get these kind of weapons, that's what it makes them feel like. They use, you know, it kind of upgrades the level of, they want to use these toys that they've received and they, they want to be the macho image of these, what they see in wars when they're given these weapons. And so we need to tone it down. There was a white man who assaulted police with a weapon a week before Yvette Henderson was killed. And you know what happened? He was talked down. Imagine that. They de-escalated. And the man was not injured, he was arrested, but he was not injured. He wasn't murdered. You know, this is what happens when black folks do anything. They get killed. When white people do stuff, they get talked down, just like on TV where you see all these SWAT teams that so nicely care and act like they really care about the people that they're dealing with. And they wait for hours and talk the person down until they're able to get control of the situation. You know, this doesn't happen for black people in this country, and this has got to stop. Yvette Henderson deserves justice. Her memory deserves justice. She does, her family deserves to see that coroner's report. And the Emeryville Police need to set an example by giving up all their military weapons.
Thank you. Ruby?
Hi, I'm not Ruby, but you skipped me, so I just went ahead and came up. I'm Vienna and I live in Oakland, but grew up in Tijuana, around where a lot of cartel murders were going on. And living there, I was around a lot of violence. And I'm living in Oakland still with a lot of violence. And I don't know what's easier, if to ask cartels to stop killing people or to ask the city council to stop killing people, but it seems kind of like the same thing. It should be like an easy question to answer, but apparently it's not. So I guess I would still be talking to the same murderers. I ask for justice for Yvette Henderson and to release reports. Yeah, thank you.
Kiri Kubah.
My name's Kiri Kubo. I just should be able to say my own name. I've worked in Emeryville for four years. I am an Oakland resident, but obviously the borders are small and all around. It's Berkeley, it's Oakland, it's Emeryville. Literally biking to work, I go through all three cities. It's, it's all of us and it's a community. And as the city council, the council, you are here because you care about the community and you care about the people. And OPD killed somebody seven blocks from my house. They killed an unnamed homeless man and it's, and no one, and it's explained. He was homeless, he allegedly attacked the officer. That's all we need to know to wipe it under the rug. No one, the vigil, there was 12 people, Ethiopian immigrants, really distraught. The neighborhood was just screaming in anger and anguish and not knowing. And that's what happens when you bury the information and you try and get people to forget. That's what happens when you don't give somebody, a human being, a name. That's what happens when you bury it under bureaucracy and red tape and paperwork. You have the power, I'm a politics major, you have the power to put that forward, you have the power to pressure the police to do the right thing. They work for you. Some of us study government too, and we know how it should work. That's not how it's working. You can make it work that way. We, we are here, we're doing our best to end mass and push you that way and push them and pressure. But you are the ones who could just say, "Release this, release the police reports." Let people know, the community know, not just the family. Everyone's affected. Everyone knows that elder, that family, everyone who walks by and shops through Emeryville thinks of that and is, deals with that trauma. Okay? And that's why it's really important that you not only release the police reports so the community can know, so the community can make informed actions on what to do next. Right? And also, the community is here to say, AR-15s, assault rifles, weapons drawn on grandmothers is overkill, right? Literally. That weapon, an AR-15, can shoot hundreds of meters. Your city is only two frickin' miles square. What do you need to do, six times when you're through the city? But it's a narrow strip. You could literally shoot into the next town. It goes through multiple walls. That's the kind of weapon you need? To police to protect? That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Steve Martinut. Oh, I'm very sorry. Come forward. Sorry, Steve, hold up a minute.
Sorry. My name's Thorn Coyle. I live in Berkeley, but I shop in Emeryville a lot. I've shopped at the Home Depot, where Yvette Henderson was also shopping. I have been with groups of citizens to the Emeryville Police Department, to the Home Depot, to the Oakland Police Department, trying with her family to get some answers about why a woman who, from all witness accounts, was panicking, trying to flag down a bus to get a ride, to get help, was shot down. Yvette's brother told me that one of the things she said over and over again was, "Every day, be thankful for living and breathing." Yvette is no longer living and breathing because Emeryville Police decided to commit an extrajudicial killing. They decided to kill her with They decided to kill her without a hearing, without a trial. So this grandmother, this mother, this beloved sister is no longer with us because of multiple shots fired, and an AR-15 being used. Please, I urge you, as a citizen, as someone who spends quite a bit of time in your town, I urge you, tell your police to stand down. Tell them they are not allowed to engage in extrajudicial killings. We have a judicial system that clearly does not work very well for my black and brown brothers, sisters, and siblings, and community members. And please, rethink the weaponry you are giving to these men and these women. And every day, we get to be thankful for living and breathing. And Yvette does not, and her family is grieving. Please, release the coroner's report. Put pressure on Alameda County. Do the right thing. Thank you.
Steve. Hold up a minute, Steve, while I call the next group. Kyle McCoy. Gigi Winter. Jamerson.
Raven Justice.
Raven?
Justice.
Okay. Raven. Kat Brooks. And Amrit Cole. Go ahead, Steve.
All right, that's Steve Martino. I live in Berkeley. We've heard the story. You've heard why we're here. To ask for justice for Yvette Henderson, and to get the coroner's report and the police report out. I would like to change the terms of this slightly. There have been allegations that she was doing something in Home Depot. There were allegations that she was doing something else. But we know why she was killed. She was killed because she walked away from the police. Just the way Gary King was killed when he walked away from the police. Or Walter Scott was killed when he walked away from the police. Or Romali Graham was killed when he walked away from the police. What is going on here that it is a crime, a punishable crime with death, to walk away from the police? We talk about the militarization of the police. That's happening all across the country. They're getting military weapons. It were tried out in Afghanistan, or in Vietnam. But it's not only the technology that is the militarization of the police. It's their insistence, their demand, their command for obedience, immediate obedience. And what does that mean? They're regimenting this society. We see the same style of police activity all across the country. It's uniform. Do you think that it's up to the cops to do this? Do you think it's because of individual police departments? No. If it's uniform, it's because there's a uniform power behind it, it's coordinating and giving these police departments their style. That's why the number of murders of unarmed people of color is going up. They have these military weapons, and you know what it signifies? It signifies that they're declaring war on the people. All of us, you too, when there were demonstrations in Berkeley in December of last year, there were officials from the Berkeley government that were tear-gassed, that were beaten by the cops. Members of the commissions over there, you're not safe. We, you and I, are safer because we have white skin. 600 people of color were killed in 2014. Twenty, yeah, 2012, rather. It was over 1,000 by the time it got to 2014.
Thank you, Steve, your time's up.
Wow, that was close.
Kyle McCoy.
I will choose to postpone me until the family speaks.
Gigi Winter.
Yes, I'm, I'm Gigi Winter. I'm a retired electrician. I live in Oakland. I come to Emeryville a lot. I just want to say that this is an epidemic. It's like a continuation of slavery that's been going on for a while. The masses of blacks and browns put in prison. The masses of blacks and browns, well, browns at the, at the border. Blacks all over this country, and around the world. There is a plan. It's like a ethnic cleansing. And it's just a continuation of slavery, so, so they're not hanging by a tree. I can't believe it happened in Emeryville, though. You sort of think it's different. But it's everywhere. This is an epidemic. And I'm just with the other people, you know, in, so that something can get for the family, some, the family can get something. We need to get that coroner's report, and, and demand no more assault rifles and military equipment for police departments. And that's all over the country, too. So, that's how I feel.
Jamerson.
Yes, I'm Jamerson Robinson. I'm the brother of Yvette Henderson. And I just wanted some, just want to know some answers, why, just why there was no autopsy report? Why was it, first of all, no police officers or office even called us? We had to find out on the news. You know, and then, you know, she was laying out there for five hours, allegedly shoplifting. And still, no, no, the only people that came up, came to us was the Oakland Police, and gave us a little small snippet of a, of a video surveillance that didn't show anything. You know, just, just showed her running, and then, soon as the police, the Emeryville Police car came, Officer Warren Williams and Michelle Shepard, within three minutes from Home Depot, to the time she was shot. You know, it was only three minutes. They, they got out the car and started, shot, shot her in the head. It wasn't no stand down, it wasn't no, no, you know what I'm saying? Put your hands up, don't move, none of that. You know what I'm saying? And there is still no autopsy report. I've been waiting on that, just to see what happened, what, what, you know what I'm saying? What happened to my sister? You know, it's a lot of unanswered questions. As my sister, you know? I mean, it's, it's to the, to the police, she's a suspect. That's their job, but it is still, that, that doesn't get for you to kill somebody, and have her children, her brothers and her family just to grieve over an alleged shoplifting. Still don't know if it was, if she actually shoplifted, because if you hear the dispatch, wherever she was trying to steal, it never even left the premises. So she didn't even steal anything. But the security guard attacked her, gave her head injury, and next thing you know, they gonna come and shoot her in the head. No, no ambulance. You can go to the Emeryville Eye, the Evil Eye, in typing Evil Eye, Yvette Henderson, you can hear the dispatch. She wasn't, she wasn't resisting or anything. She was standing right there to, with the, the security guard. And the next thing you know, he, he grabbed her, whatever, and she fell, hit her head. And, you know, I just, I just want answers. Can I, can we please get some, some answers to what really going on? Because what's going on now, is like, I, I don't, I don't understand it. I mean, I don't trust any of it, because, because you guys are not giving me the answers, or, or the, you know, y'all people, I mean, not y'all people, but, you know, y'all work here. This is your job. At least give me my, give the answers, and the job, do your job, man. I shouldn't have to wait for an autopsy report, or, or wait to hear on the news that my family has been murdered. Been sitting on the ground for five hours. She didn't even have a funeral, because they shot her in the head. And it just, it was all messed up. She had no funeral. This is her memorial right here. This is it. This, this is, this is it. So, can you please give me, give us the autopsy report? Demilitarize, demilitarize the Emeryville Police, and can y'all please do something to Michelle Shepard and Warren Williams? Which was, which was on a paid leave after they killed her. I mean, I, I, let, let me steal something from my, my job. I'm instantly getting fired. Let me, let me steal something. Or let me hurt somebody. Thank you.
Thank you. Raven?
Justice. I came a long way from Atlanta. I raised him. Jamerson. I walked through Vietnam. I know what those assault weapons are do to you. What are the tasers for? 50,000 votes, that's a waste of money, if they can't use them. I lost my baby in 2010. He got murdered in Oakland. No police report. They don't even know what kind of bullet it is. Want justice for justice. This young man, and that young lady, had, got babies. What are their children gonna do? What if it was your baby? Your baby? What would you do? Everybody make mistake in life. That's why we have laws. Mr. Johnson gave me a brown star for what? America. Half of my comrades died, but I made it back. Now, we want justice for these young people dying every day. I'm not gonna take up, and I want to thank everybody for coming out of here to help him. And he eat the word of wisdom. If y'all can't do it, I'll bring somebody else in, Ken. Thank you very much.
Amrit Cole.
My name is Kyle McCoy. I choose to speak.
Oh, Kyle McCoy.
Yes. Hi, my name is Kyle McCoy, and I understand that, right as of right now, the actual autopsy is not, has not been released yet. They have a month after a person is killed in California to release an autopsy. From the Black Lives Liberation Party, I speak. And also, the Black Lives Liberation Party, and also for Black Lives Matter and Trans Lives Matter, we are continuing to fight for all these people that are being killed in our communities. And should we not be able to have even assault rifles on a police force? Unless you want to bring back AK-47s within the community, and be armed to take battle with the police? If you want war, we can do that for you. But right now, we are asking you guys to be peaceful, and to actually hand over the autopsy report. The autopsy report, to my understanding, has been finished. And those police officers that are still on duty, they need to be fired immediately. Because if not, we will come back. Oakland, Berkeley, Richmond, Emeryville. Everyone will be here. And I would like to let you know that everyone to come to and view the Oakland City Council meeting this Tuesday, because that's what you call a movement that's gonna happen. Thank you.
Amrit Cole. I would again ask you to waive your papers, if you can, instead of copy. Amrit?
Hi, my name's Amrit Coley, and I work in Emeryville. I'm an Oakland resident. I'm not a terrorist, I'm a brown-skinned activist. And I'm here to demand justice for Yvette Henderson and her family. She was a grandmother, and a loved mother. And I know that if it was my mother, that I really don't know what I would do. But I would certainly be here, doing exactly what I'm doing now. I think it's, it's a travesty that not cooperating with the police can be seen as obstruction of justice, but holding the coroner's report for eight months is not seen as obstruction of justice. To me, that is obstruction of justice. I think that militarizing the police in this country is, is a travesty, and, and it's, it's unconscionable. I don't think that the city of Emeryville needs any kind of military weapons or drones. So, and the fact that we are seeing murder after murder after murder by police officers in this country, who are not being held accountable, is, is again, more of a travesty. This isn't the America that I came to from Africa. This isn't the America that I was promised. This is the same thing as I left. So I'm, I'm basically here to, with everybody else, to say that all you need to do is take a stand, the right stand, for the right thing, for the right person. And Yvette Henderson was that person.
Kat Brooks.
Good evening. My name is Kat Brooks. I'm the co-founder of the Anti-Police Terror Project. We were the first responders that were on the ground after Yvette was murdered. And we've been walking as best we can with the family through this tragedy. And my guess is that this is the beginning of a long engagement with the Emeryville City Council. We're knowing, we're known for our staying power and our commitment to justice. I've been doing work around police terror for a really long time. And I don't know if it's because I'm some of the same age as Yvette, or it's because of my mother, or because I live around the corner from where she was murdered. But this hit me really hard in the gut. And it continues to hit me hard in the gut as we hear and repeat her story. You honored a lot of people at the beginning of this meeting. There's one more person that needs to be honored tonight, and that's Yvette Henderson. And the way that you do that is by compelling the coroner's office to release that autopsy report. She was killed in February. It is absolutely unconscionable that we are in September, and her family does not have access to those reports. I was with the family when we, when OPD conceded after several demonstrations, and allowed us to watch a video, almost useless video, as it didn't show the instigating event, which was her assault in Home Depot. But I was with them. Two Emeryville police officers were there. And when we made the request for the autopsy report, they laughed at us. And the officer said, "You'll get it when we decide." So the fact that it's still being withheld after those comments says to me that this is intentional. The fact that there's six months to file the civil suit, and that time has come and gone, says to me that that, that is being withheld in order to impede the one pathway that a family has after their loved one is stolen, to get any type of comfort, to get any kind of justice. They'll never get Yvette back. But what they can get is some semblance of justice inside of our justice system. People have talked about the disparity between how white people are treated by police, and how black people and other folks of color are treated by police. But I'm gonna give a very concrete example. A week before Yvette was murdered, a block away from where she was murdered, a man whose last name is Hedwick, shot, actual, fired at the police. The police retreated, they called a mental health team, and they took him in alive. He had to answer for that before a jury of his peers. Dylan Roof walked into a church, gunned down nine Africans while they were praying. He wasn't considered armed and dangerous. Not only was he taken in alive, he was taken to Burger King to get some food before they took him to jail. We have to ask ourselves some serious questions about why Yvette Henderson was not afforded that same opportunity. While hundreds, thousands of black people across this country, and in the Bay Area, we're up to about two a week here. We're asking for you to release the coroner's report. I heard you. I heard you. And we're asking for you to demilitarize your police department, and we'll be here until that happens. Thank you.
There are no more requests for citizens to be heard. If you want to speak now, just come forward.
Yeah, we know that on the consent.
Good evening. My name is Dan Siegel. I'm the attorney for the Henderson family. I want to thank you all for listening tonight and for paying attention to the speakers who are here. And in fact, I'm gonna go to the Oakland City Council meeting next week and tell them how polite the members of this council are. When I came up here tonight, I somehow went back in time and thought about one of the first cases I ever did, which was in 1973, when three Emeryville detectives shot 14-year-old Tyrone Guyton in the back. So things haven't changed very much. We're just getting older, but the cycle of violence continues, police violence. I want to stress some things that you can do, and I mean this very seriously, because often, city councils and similar bodies allow themselves to be led by staff, led by police departments. Don't interject themselves. You should meet with your city attorney, your city manager, and get those reports released. I know they're done. Seven months ago is when this killing happened. Neither Oakland nor Emeryville has released its report. The coroner says, and I've been in touch with the coroner, "We're not releasing our report because the police departments asked us not to until they finish their investigations." Yes, that's true, and that was the same situation that occurred in the Allen Blueford case until 50 people went to the coroner's office. So that's one thing you can do. I think withholding these reports is strategic. They don't want us to know what the police know. They want to impede legal action and so on. So meet with your staff and get these reports released. The other thing you can do is take a stand on the weaponry that your department has. You know, in 1980, when Ronald Reagan started the war on drugs, there were 200,000 people in prison in this country. Today, there are 2.2 million people in prison and jails in this country, mostly for nonviolent drug offenses. At the same time, they started releasing military-grade weapons to police departments all over the country, assault weapons, tanks, helicopters, and similar things. And most police departments just said, "Great, we can use these." But that exacerbated by tenfold the alienation between the police departments and the communities that they're supposed to police. Some communities have said, "No, we don't need this equipment. We want our police to operate on a human scale and soft uniforms with less weapons to relate to the community, not to intimidate, not to act like an occupying army." That's a matter of policy. That is within your purview to determine what weapons this police department has. I read just a couple of days ago, Walmart has decided to stop selling AR-15s. Well, Emeryville can stop using AR-15s. So in addition to all you've heard tonight, I urge you very strongly to act with your authority as elected representatives of this community and take control of this situation so we don't have to keep coming back here. Thank you.
Actually, the war on drugs was started by Richard Nixon, really. But anyway. Nixon was the first one to use the term "war on drugs." But anyway, that's not why I'm here to speak. I'm here to speak because, you know, a lot of compelling testimony here, and every single person that spoke made really good and legitimate points, I think. And I'm a resident of Emeryville, in case anybody here doesn't know that. I'm gonna say the same thing to you, the four of you, usually five of you, that I usually say when I make a point or somebody else makes a legitimate point to, and that is that the Brown Act forbids the city council from discussing what people bring up at the public comments in any substantive way. We know that. But what the four of you should know, and everybody here should also know, that doesn't preclude you from making comments, just not substantive comments. So you were asked very clearly, very clearly here, by many, many speakers to, you know, release these reports, especially the coroner's report. And so I think it's incumbent upon you this time, I hope this time you actually do it, you actually speak, make some comments to the people here to answer their questions, their legitimate questions, and I hope that you don't use the phony Brown Act excuse to not respond like you have so many times in the past. I hope this passionate group about a very important subject will let the city council engage in discussion that the Brown Act does in fact provide for, and that is, you can make comments on this. These people asked you some legitimate questions here. Insofar that you don't violate the Brown Act, I think you should answer them. I think it's incumbent on the four of you to try to answer what the people legitimately have asked.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Come forward, Mr. Carpio.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Andre Carpio. I'm different from most of the people, and I want to explain to you why. I was asked by a neighbor who witnessed some time ago, the police invaded my house and red-tagged I was unsafe, and I wasn't there. But it disturbed me because the neighbors are very upset by the amount of police and the way they were armed and ready to shoot. And since I wasn't there, for me, it's hearsay. But those people are very emotionally terrified. And what I'm doing in life is different because I want to show you. I am what we said from my pattern, I'm an inventor. And in making invention, I have to think about it, design, and produce what we call art history. This is what the art history of a suspension. And part of the red tag that has been put on the fence in which I'm forbidden to go in my own house is called safety, and I have been devoted my life to make safety device. This is, for instance, a safety device that we put on a race car, and it indicates the G, and it indicates the banking of the pilot when it takes, when it goes to turn. It also has a gimbal, and the gimbal also indicates when the speed is exceeding the coefficient of adherence of the pneumatic. So this is a great safety for pilot, for driver, or race car. So to make it short here, you know, all this thing here is very emotional, and people cry and all that, and I have been asked what was my opinion, and my opinion is this. Since Nora Davis, who you've been elected 26 years ago, you know, you have been the main pusher of the theft of my machine shop, then the theft of my submarine, and then you have all the destruction of my scaffolding so I cannot finish my stainless steel roof. And now you are informing.
Mr. Carpio, your time is up.
Just wait a minute. Let me finish what I'm saying, you know? Don't be rude.
Mr. Carpio, your time is up.
I did accuse you of being a thief, and you are a thief, and you are using the law enforcement to steal from people. So far, I'm concerned you are the thief and you are the criminal. If the police were told by you not to shoot, they would not shoot. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Any other comments? No. We'll move on to the city manager's report.
I think there was a person who wanted to speak on the consent calendar.
No, this was on an agenda item 5.16. This was Jennifer Lynn on 5.16. City manager's report.
Thank you. Madam Vice Mayor, I have no report this evening.
Stop talking about money. Start talking about.
I would entertain.
Genocide! You are apathetic. You are apathetic. You need to wake up and stop looking at these computers and listen to these people. Understand what apathy is. You, Nora Davis, Vice Mayor, who has been looking everywhere except the eyes and the hearts of the people, you. And you, Charles Bryant, need to wake up. What the hell is the matter with y'all? People here come here talking about murder, and y'all looking at your computers, not even listening. And demilitarize your police force before we will. Wake up!
I would entertain a motion for the consent calendar. I'd like to pull item 5.16.
Okay.
But I'd entertain a motion for the rest of the calendar.
Second.
Well, I would like to talk about a couple of items on the consent calendar.
Which ones do you want, Scott?
5.8 and 5.
Wait a second. 5.8.
And 5.10.
5.10, okay. Take a roll call vote on the rest of the consent items.
Councilmember Asher.
Aye.
Councilmember Donahue.
Aye.
Councilmember Martinez.
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Davis.
Aye.
And Mayor Atkins is excused.
Okay, we'll move right to Scott's item, 5.8, appropriations limit. Is that the one you wanted?
Yes. 5.8 has to do with the economic size of our government. It's called the GAN limit, and this is, you know, I'm a new council member. This is the first time I've seen anything like this. And this is, yes, I was entertained by it because.
I was the first time I saw it, too.
It was looking at our city government from a different point of view than I'm looking at it normally. I'm looking at it like, what do we do with our budget? How do we provide for our city? What is the meaning of our city public funds, and how do we get benefit from what we share? And this is trying to say that there's a limit to how much we should tax or appropriate for a given size of a city. And what's kind of interesting is the limits are so much greater than our current budget. It's almost three times our current budget. Does this mean we're doing something right, or does this mean that we should expand our budget? That we're not generating enough, you know?
Revenue?
Enough revenue? So I'm just, you know, I just had to bring this up because, you know, I, it is, you know, there's balance in life, and I'm concerned with balance for what we pay for taxes and what we get for it. But this is sort of like saying, implying that we're way under balance, maybe.
Scott, could we ask for a report at the next meeting explaining this whole thing in the process and why it's a good thing that we're significantly under what the total we could spend? Some cities are right up at the limit.
Yeah, that's true.
But it would be very helpful to members of the council and to the public if we could have a brief report, a written report in the next agenda. How's that?
That would be nice. You know, just a little, you know, looking at our city in relation to other cities would be interesting.
You move that resolution, Scott?
Yes.
Who's the second?
Second.
Okay, without objection, it passes. Then we move down to 510, First Amendment to the Audit Services.
Okay, now, you know, it is an economic issue, and, you know, I looked at the last figures for what we spent to get audited, and being generous to the past audit amounts per year, you know, if I would say that their last, that what they were charging us, being generous, we could say in the last year before we cut this deal, maybe $109,000, even though the average was much less over the previous five years. If I put, you know, a 3% for inflation on top of that, it would be significantly less than what they're asking. Now, I can understand that this is a one-time deal for one year and not for five years, and why they may ask for more. And I can understand that they weren't expecting this, so they could ask for more. And I can understand we've had a change of management. But still, it seems like it's at least 8% above the inflation rate, and it also seems like they might be doing a lot less work in that our city budget five years ago was twice as big. Does that mean that they're doing a lot less work? You know, what's with this? And, you know, the price of lawyers theoretically should be going down because there's a glut of lawyers.
It will never go down. These are actuaries.
Well, there's a glut of lawyers. The price of teachers should be going up. We need more teachers. But the price of auditors, is it really, you know, accelerating at 8% at least?
No, it's a little bit more than that. It's actually because of the new GASP rule about how we show our pensions on our books. They used to be in the footnotes, and now we have to put them into our financial statements. So that requires a lot of extra work. This is the first time we're implementing this on our books, and so it is a lot of extra work trying to convert our footnotes and our old way of reporting it into the new method. So this is a one-time increase, and after that, this should be normalized, so.
Okay.
And they're actuaries, so they're good.
Thank you for, thank you.
Is that a motion to approve?
Yes.
Second.
Without objection, we move on to item 5.16. And we have a speaker that wants to speak to that, Jennifer Lynn. This is the second reading of an ordinance concerning the minimum wage, Page Six, sick leave, and other employment standards.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Lynn. I'm with the East Bay Alliance for a Sustainable Economy, and I'm just here tonight to generally support the amendments. I understand this is the second reading. I just had one request, the final amendment that is included in the report regarding the anti-retaliation, not reducing funding for workers as a result of the minimum wage. There's been proposed language from the staff that changes non-managerial employees to non-exempt employees, and we have some concerns that that actually creates more ambiguity than clarity. Non-managerial is a definition that is clear in the case law. We feel like non-exempt is, leaves out some low-wage workers that would otherwise benefit from this anti-retaliation protection. So we would respectfully request that the rest of the amendments move forward, that this one component be continued, and that we would actively work with the city attorney to come up with language that is clear. Thank you.
So the purpose of the proposed ordinance amendment was, that was twofold. The original language was non-managerial employees, and the sense was that we had not defined that term. And so the idea was that we were looking to, the idea behind the protection or the protection provision is that we wanted to make sure that employers who are looking to, who are looking to comply with the ordinance don't make up the increased cost for doing business by, represented by their increased labor costs, by reducing the benefits that they would be paying to their non-exempt employee, to their hourly employees, the lowest-paid employees. The idea, though, was that because we had not defined the term "non-managerial," we were concerned that there was going to be ambiguity regarding, you know, who exactly are these employees that are supposed to be protected by the non-retaliatory provision of the statute, which is why we looked to the more defined terms of non-exempt employee, which is, you know, well-defined in federal and state law. So that was the purpose for the proposed amendment. I will note that if the city council... I will note that if the city council, you know, at this point, the city council has adopted the first reading of the ordinance as presented. So if you wanted to make any changes from what is presented for the second reading, you would need to do another first reading. So, you know, it's, unfortunately, it's sort of an all-or-nothing package at this point. The options for the city council, you have a couple of options right now. You can adopt the second reading as is. You can adopt the second, adopt the second reading and provide some direction to staff to come up with another proposed, you know, additional refinements. If you so choose, that would require another first reading and another second reading with a 30-day passage after that. So those are, those are the options that you have.
For me, I would move that we adopt the second reading with, I still feel like I'm grappling with that distinction, but I also want to get this done. And so my preference would be to move forward with the second reading, and then we can direct staff to give us a little more information, so I have some context to work with.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Without exception. The second reading passes.
Okay.
Let's see. Let's go on to action items. Update on PG&E. I am so sorry. I lost track of the site that PG&E is here. Sorry, guys. Okay, Maurice.
If you could bear with me a minute, the computer switched off.
Yeah, it did do that.
Vice Mayor Nora Davis, members of the city council. I've requested PG&E to come to the city council to make a brief presentation on a gas main pipeline safety project they have underway. As you know, over the last couple of years, we've had a lot of construction in the area of Powell and Hollis. In particular, last year, we had quite a bit of water main work done on the street. And then to follow up with that, we had a lot of sewer main construction on Powell Street this year, along with all the redevelopment work that's going on at the intersection of Powell and Hollis. We are getting ready to start a new project on Hollis Street. We're going to reconstruct Hollis Street from Powell Street north to the city limits. So there's still quite a bit to go now. We've asked, PG&E has requested that they do some work on Hollis Street as well. It's quite, it's going to be quite a lot of congestion as a result of it. But it's a very important project, and I'd like them to explain it so that you understand why you might be getting some complaints from residents, and you understand why this work has to go on. So with that, I'm going to pass it off to Marcos Montes with PG&E and his team.
Good evening. Vice Mayor Davis, councilmembers. My name is Marcos Montes. I'm part of the Government Relations Team that represents our gas operations team. And I just wanted to provide a brief update on the products that we do have along Hollis. With me today, thankfully, I have my construction manager for the projects, Matt Hewitt here, and the two project managers, John Edwards and Paul Domich. Thank you, guys, for coming. So what we have going on here is we have a casing remediation removal program. As part of our Safety and Comprehension Program that we have at PG&E for our gas transmission operations, we realized that the casings around our pipelines that are mainly found under railways and main thoroughways created a little bit of a risk for corrosion. Back when they were initially installed, they were actually a safety measure for their own right to protect for dynamic loads and excavation around those areas. New technology, new studies have shown us that with seismic activity, water intrusion, there could be a little bit of corrosion that comes around those pipelines with the casing. So we want to go ahead and mitigate those things. Kind of what we do is we use some advanced technology. We expose the pipeline, the casing. And once we do that, we have engineers analyze the pipeline and the casing for its health. They can then make a decision based on what we've seen to either remove the casing. In some cases, that could be kind of extensive, or remediate it, which could actually, you know, help minimize the public impact. During this process, we will have to redirect some traffic. But the good thing is that we won't lose any gas services. So just a quick update on the three projects that we have. Oops, went a little too far. So CC-180 was our first project, and we mobilized on this project. It was on Hollis near 65th on July 6th. That was a casing removal. We were in and out of there and fully restored by August 25th, which then allowed us to roll into now CC-179, which is on Hollis near 53rd. That is initially targeted as a casing removal during what we call potholing, where we can kind of make some minor bellholes in the right of way to kind of find out what is going on underneath the road. We found that...
May I ask something?
Yeah, sure.
What'd you find?
We found...
With the first casing?
With the first casing?
Yeah.
Well, I guess Matt can probably speak to that a little bit better.
Right, if we're worried about corrosion and things, what did you find?
Sure. No, absolutely. Okay.
Sure.
Thank you.
The Dean of Council, Matt Hewitt, PG&E Lead Construction Manager. So on CC-180, we actually found a relatively minor amount of corrosion. Typically, we we give these pipelines various levels of life expectancies. And really, the casing remediation or casing removal, it gives us kind of a glimpse, kind of like a health checkup of where the line is and what we can expect for, how long it'll last, how safe it will last. Sometimes we find unexpected things. Sometimes we actually find that it's much improved over what we maybe were expecting. Sometimes we go to these casing projects because there's contact between the casing and the transmission line, and it interrupts our electrical current that we run through the lines. In both cases of CC-180 and CC-179, we're actually looking at doing a removal of those because the casing's no longer required, whether it be in a railroad system that is no longer in place, the tracks aren't there. We find it's best to remove the casing because it eliminates any future future interruptions or future potential contact between the casing and the transmission line. CC-179 has actually been a little bit more peculiar because there's actually a concrete storm drain structure that still exists. So we'll most likely look at doing a remediation instead of a removal, which means that we're still going to be able to do even a partial examination of what's underneath or inside the casing as it relates to the transmission line. And from there, again, it's kind of like a health checkup of how is it doing? Is the casing affecting anything abnormal to the transmission line? More interesting will be, I think, CC-016. It's much deeper. It's going to be a lot more challenging. I know that one of the reasons why...
Well, I just, I go ahead. This is the project status. Can we move to like maybe the site map so you can kind of get an overview?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine. Thank you, though. I may have a follow-up.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is kind of the overview of 179 where we're currently at right now?
It's relatively small area. Like I said, the casing's not very long. There's, as we found during potholing, there's still a concrete structure there, which means that we're not going to do, most likely, we're not going to do a removal because it's very challenging to get underneath such large structures.
And that's okay?
And that's okay.
So then what happens if you can't remove it? And we know that it's, you know, has, that some of them have defects, like what other things do you do to mitigate with these pipelines, then?
So one of the things that we've done is technology changes quite a bit. A lot of the lines we go to are honestly considerably older than I am. But our technology's getting better. We, whenever possible, we will gel fill them, which basically puts like a like a non-contact, non-fluid, no way to transfer electricity from the casing to the transmission line. If we get to one that is, say, for example, in such condition that for that section, we need to replace it, then we would engineer up the plans to basically replace that section. Not too often do we run into any that are in such dire condition that that's the case. Sometimes it's more logistics, like we came in in, say, for example, 1956, and then the rest of the city and the world was built on top, so we no longer have access to certain lines. So in some cases, it's easier to just to lay or bore or HDD a new line through the segment rather than get access. But in the case of CC-179, it's relatively small. We most likely will do a remediation. The engineers still have to kind of go through a few logistics on that. The, I don't mean to jump ahead, but the CC-016 is more likely to be more impactful just because of its location, location, location.
Yeah.
And honestly, for us, it's considerably deeper. We did take the approach with CC-80, CC-180 and CC-179. We were trying to be careful because we've been doing this now for several years, and we're getting smarter, anticipating water, anticipating things that could be a little bit unexpected but are known to happen in other areas on the East Bay. We have learned quite a bit about the areas around this intersection because we've been north of it, we've been south of it, and we're trying to be smart. Either way, we're going to be in the intersection, and we're going to impact the public, and we really don't...
For how long? For how long?
So, yeah, first, I would like to thank Maurice for, I kind of tend to over-communicate a little bit. But it's been very helpful to have him as kind of a guide of what we need to do, how we should do it. We are going to probably follow in closely after the paving project, kind of be notified by Maurice and his staff when we can go ahead and start on CC-16. Our goal is to work, once that happens, hopefully sometime in October, up into the Holiday Moratorium. At that time, we'll go ahead and temporarily restore the area and come back and complete the rest of the project in the winter, early winter.
Wait, Holiday Moratorium. Now I need months, and I need to understand the, how long this is taking, and the...
So the conversation has been that they've looked at the work, and they anticipate it's going to take them 40 days to do the work in the daytime.
In the daytime.
In the daytime. If they were to do it at night, which they were looking at, it was going to take 100 nights.
This intersection...
This work right here, they're talking about 40 days of work to be done.
So the initial, what we looked at initially was to do the removal here. But really, talking to Maurice and his staff and talking to our engineers, it just, the best thing for us to do here is to remediate. It's going to do, serve the same purpose, and it's going to minimize, obviously, the public impact and lessen the duration of the project.
Yeah.
It's very disruptive. We're aware of that. We're going to try to help things along by allowing PG&E to use our Greenway site to stage their Baker tanks, so they don't have to reset that up all the time. And the idea is to get it done before we start our Greenway Park construction.
Yeah, yeah.
And so 40 days of work, they're going to start probably mid-October. And then just as the, as the traffic gets real heavy during the holiday season, they'll plate it up.
Okay.
And then come back after the New Year to finish the work.
But this is critical. This pipe is the equivalent to the pipe that blew up in Colma, right?
It is a 30-inch transmission pipeline.
Exactly.
And we hydrotested it.
We don't need a firebomb in the middle of our town. So we need to get this done. It's going to be pain all around. You're going to get nothing but phone calls.
So are you.
I'm just telling them I'll have to call Maurice and PG&E.
One good thing that we do have, we do have an extensive customer impact outreach program, and we have a dedicated representative that will provide their phone number and do canvassing in the area. So we'll try to mitigate those phone calls.
Good signage.
Signage, numbers, a lot of stuff. Yeah. We, obviously, we've been doing this for, you know, quite a long time, and we've really learned from, you know, our mistakes. And we want to make sure that we minimize the impact to the public and to, you know, the city staff.
You're going into a rat's nest down here.
So the terms of the permit, so we would allow them to start work at 7:00, like our noise ordinance allows. They want to work about 10-hour days, but probably they'll have, they'll be cut off at around 4:00 when the congestion really starts in the afternoon. And hopefully, that'll help mitigate some of the congestion if they cut out by 4:00.
Thanks.
So there will be any kind of through, through traffic at all? One lane, something like that?
Yeah, we're working with Maurice and his staff on a traffic control plan that's going to be digestible, obviously.
Very good. So it's not total blockage. It's just minimized. Okay. It's going to be brutal, guys.
Yeah.
Both directions.
I'd like to add something, too. So we, I, with Union City, took on a similar, very impactful intersection and had to meet with the city council as well. I'd like to highlight that this will also be a special interest project of mine. And we earned, PG&E earned, a very gracious, very thankful letter from Union City. And with this project, we hope to do the same thing with your...
Let's shoot for that. Yeah.
Send us a letter what you did for Union City, and we'll hold you to that.
Certainly.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving along to resolution of the city council appointing two people to serve in the Commission on Aging, Mary Farrell and Louis Labott, who is coming back to join us again
So moved.
on the Committee on Aging. Is there a second on that?
Second.
Okay. And then we're moving on to resolution of the resignation of Krisna Hank and appointing, I'm suggesting that we take the suggestion of the Public Arts Committee.
Okay.
Could I hear a resolution to that effect?
I'd move that.
I second.
Okay. Without exception, that resolution passes. There's nothing on the city's housing successor department head, planning director.
The August 27th Planning Commission meeting was canceled, so I have no report.
Well, that was easy.
Yeah.
Okay, and council members, Councilmember Donahue.
Okay, I want to show you a brief PowerPoint about a potential future agenda item.
Got it, Maurice?
Is it loaded on here?
It should be.
Pretty blurry. Who took that picture?
There's a couple versions. I put them all in, but I think this is the one.
Okay, I'll just assume that that's the right one, if it's a PowerPoint. This has to do with what I hope will be a regional improvement to our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure. And there are many ways that our city can be improved for our future. We have a bicycle pedestrian trail that is right along the bay, the Bay Trail. And it comes into Emeryville, as you see, right at Powell Street. And this circle right here is an intersection that has been deemed in the past by Alameda County to be the most dangerous pedestrian and bicycle intersection in the county. And we're making improvements for the Bay Trail to go along this street right here. We're currently working on this. And go through here and connect up to the Bay Bridge. This gets quite a bit of weekend traffic, but in the future, it's projected that when EARP finishes designing the Bay Trail to continue over the suspension part of the Bay Bridge, people will be commuting through our city to actually go to San Francisco.
On bikes?
On bicycles, yes. Or walking, but more likely on bicycles. Electric bikes are becoming more and more of a reality. It's going to be a real thing in the future, I predict. I have a proposal, you know, I've, our committee, when I was on the Bicycle Ped Committee, looked at a potential tunnel through this part of town that was deemed not worthy. Ex-councilmember John Fricki tried to get a bridge right here at Temiskel Creek considered, and he basically proposed shutting down the on-ramp onto 80 from...
That was popular.
Okay, I need to go back. Okay, well, this...
Press the arrow button. Press the left arrow button on the keyboard.
This is really sensitive. So use the arrow keys here.
All right, great. This proposal is to create an underpass that would cost a lot less than what was 10 years ago, $62 million to make a bridge, but an unknown amount less. This would be to have the Bay Trail continue parallel to, with the on-ramp, as you can see right here. This is that same dangerous intersection, but this would be continuing the Bay Trail along the edge of the on-ramp. And in some places, there would have to be pilings and wooden extensions to the path, like the path on the north side of Watergate. And then the trail would loop around and go underneath the freeway right here, and then emerge up and get into the existing bike trail here on Shell Mount. emerge up and get into the existing bike trail here on Shell Mound. There is a close-up of the dangerous intersection. We've actually had two police officers injured on their bikes at this intersection. It has been worked on a little bit by Caltrans clearing out the, some of the brush, so perhaps it's a little safer. But this path that I'm proposing is a close-up for Temescal Creek, as you're seeing, would go underneath 80 at this location. And it would go under, and it would actually be slightly lower than mean sea level where it went under. Here's looking at Temescal Creek right now with about mid, or lower than, it's about mid-tide. You can see that there are four boars, two round boars here that let Temescal Creek go out to the bay, and then two square boars right here. I'm proposing one of these boars to be used as this access point to-- Here is myself and John F. Feld, our school board president, going through the, one of the tunnels in Greg Harper's canoe with John's son, Dylan, in between us, who you can't see.
Oh, we're such--
And you can do this today. You can take a canoe trip up Temescal Creek. It's kind of exciting. A lot of people like this trip. Here is a graphic illustration of the same location we were in right then, showing pedestrian and bicycle there, and it's 10 foot, 6 feet wide and 8 feet tall. And I've measured it myself, and it's a concrete casing. And this is showing it as if it has a high tide right here, a very high tide, illustrating that this path would not have water in it because of the two walls right here on either side of it, and the back-and-forth tide and rain in the hills would be going down through the other three boars. Here's an example of a similar idea in Colorado, where you see two boars, and the bore on the right is receiving normal stream water right here. But when the tide, or excuse me, when the flood conditions happen, right where this red dotted line is, the water flows over this, and this channel gets used so that a flood will be addressed, and the underpass won't be used by pedestrians and cyclists at that time. Here is a north-south cross-section through the proposed Emeryville Tunnel here, and this shows where that same dotted line would be in Emeryville on the east side here. And it's showing that this would be what would be called a weir edge, and water would flow over this at heavy rain in the hills and high tide. Water would go down, and this would not interrupt capacity for the flood condition for this. And here you can see an illustration of a sump pump that later, after this would fill up, would clear out this water. And you can see, here it is, flood condition, high tide during heavy rain, so this path would not be used at that time. Here's what happens in Boulder, Colorado, where they have these underpasses through their downtown. They just close the gates when the path is not available. Here is downtown Reno. They have the same idea, an underpass through their downtown, and bicyclists and pedestrian uses, use this, except for during a flood. This, this actually takes up a little bit of capacity in their flood system, and they don't care. They just figure, well, we'll take a little bit of capacity, meaning this wall right here, and they raising the path here has caused a little less capacity for flooding, but they've done their calculations, and their engineer said, yeah, let's do it. Okay, here is another issue about why we don't currently have the Bay Trail going along the Emeryville mudflats. Here in Albany, the bay comes up, and when the bay is in high tide, it comes all the way up to this place, and birdlife, migrating birdlife, lose calories when dogs bark at them along the Bay Trail. And this is why the Emeryville section wasn't built, because of the Audubon Society and Sierra Club saying, no, we need to protect our birds. But up in Albany, they decided that the Bay Trail was so important along the edge that they had to come up with a solution, and they did. A concrete wall for a couple of feet high that prevents the birds from seeing dogs, and then a chain-link fence to, that's filled with slats here. And you can look over it when you're cycling and see the birds, but the birds don't alight, and this has proven to show that the birds are living with the Bay Trail going through Albany. And when I was running for office with Diane, when we asked for Sierra Club endorsement, I said, I only want your endorsement if you will agree that this is a legitimate use in Emeryville, as proven by Albany. And they like, oh, are you one of those crazy Emeryville people? And then I went through the whole routine, and they said, okay, we'll endorse you. This idea could prove to be a good idea. Here's a King Tide in Marin County during the last few years. It happens every year. Have they done anything about their high tide, below sea level at King Tide conditions in Marin? No, they just have flood conditions. Is global sea level rising? Yes, it is. Here is a shot in the Netherlands. They know about global sea level and what they can do to live below sea level. And here's an example. You can see they have a freeway right here going underneath what is their sea level canal right here, and they have railroad tracks going underneath their sea level canal. They just know how to deal with below sea level and just do this all the time. They are masters at living below sea level, and we're probably going to have to become masters, too, in our future. And what I'm showing you here in this proposal is a way to live with rising sea level. I'm just saying that what I want to bring to the agenda in the future is a small amount of dough, is what I'm going to propose, that we'll have engineers look at this idea and see how viable it is, see, you know, with various levels of sea rise and how fast it would, how much it would flood, whether, what the costs would be, you know, a little bit, a little bit of budget to be able to take it to the region and have the regional use of this pay for it. I've already been told by some of the people who work for East Bay Bike Coalition that this would qualify for Measure BB funding. So I'm not asking much of Emeryville, just to consider the idea. If you like it on the agenda item, I would send it forward to other regional groups. Here is the east side of the freeway, and this little triangular piece of land, I'm proposing something, a cultural use of a lot we've been unable to sell in the past, that we scoop out a little bit of this dirt right here and start to grow some tulip reeds. And here's looking at that same area on the left during the spring. You can see it's all green with grass, that we just sort of open up the wall a little bit and let the flood control people, make them happy, because we'd be increasing flood relief by making this little inlet bay, but our path would rise up and go through this little bay. And here's looking at it the other direction, looking east towards Bay Street. And that little area on the right, I'm saying we could have a little bay that we'd make. And the reason why I'm saying it's a good idea is that we could grow some tulip reeds to honor our past in Emeryville, where we used to build tulip reed canoes here. Homo sapiens were masters, when we lived in Emeryville at that time, of building our canoes out of these tulip reeds that would readily grow there. And what I'm suggesting is, at this location, we could easily have a tulip reed canoe festival, and we would show how these canoes are built in our, in our historic past. This location would have these, this use, and we would celebrate this area in a way that perhaps might be more meaningful than how we're currently celebrating the Shell Mound destruction and site at Bay Street Mall. I think this could be something that would interest the public, and I think the public would enjoy using this kind of facility and find that there's some significance into it. So I, I just hope that we will consider having this item as an agenda item in the future.
I think it's a great idea.
I would love to see it, Scott, yeah.
Are you sure you touch base with the good old water district, though? The flood control district?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, moving along. Mayor Atkins--
Oh, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor Davis, I'm not on the agenda, but there is something I'd like to bring up and on this part of the agenda.
Sure. Can I just speak to this item that Ruth Atkins, Mayor Atkins, had on here? This was concerning the short-term housing rentals. This is a big issue in Watergate right now with the Airbnb and the youth, commercial use of properties. So do, can we have a direction from the Council to--
I'd like to start discussing--
Yeah.
--the impact of the short-term rentals--
So Carolyn, can you follow up on that?
Yes.
Go ahead, Diane.
I don't have a PowerPoint presentation, unfortunately, but I did want to start the conversation around Fair Work Week. It was something that we discussed very briefly when we were talking about minimum wage, but I think at the time, the temperature was that we wanted to get going on that. But I would like to propose to, I'd love to get the nod from you all to start talking to staff about Fair Work Week legislation. Fair Work Week addresses the issues of--
Is it already an established week someplace?
I, you mean, is there, does somebody have a set of policies that they're already? Yeah, there are groups, there are advocacy groups that have outlined what they think would go into local Fair Work Week legislation. I would like to work with staff to make sure that it's the right fit for Emeryville and actually really tailor it to our population, to our workers here, and to our businesses here. And, and really, I'd like to spearhead working together with the community and making sure that we have an engaged process, that people don't feel left out of the conversation. It's not something I feel that we need to rush, but I would love to, to get the nod to actually--
I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, I'd be supportive of that, Diane.
I agree.
I'm sorry for no PowerPoint.
I have one quick thing I want to ask. As an agenda item, one of the things I would like to propose for an upcoming agenda is that we recognize Indigenous Peoples' Day instead of Columbus Day in the city of Emeryville. So if we could get that on a future agenda, I'd appreciate it, so the Council can discuss it.
Okay, any other department heads, council members? Thank you, one and all, for a very interesting meeting. Meetings are journey.